Ten seconds. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us. On July, I'm sorry, gosh, this is a bad start. Sorry, Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. We appreciate your attendance here this evening. And we begin our meetings with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. So I would invite you to join us. Thank you. And now the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to recognize that this afternoon, we have a proclamation for September 2021 as National PTA Month here in Orange County Public Schools. And I'm excited to announce that Melanie Williams, President of the Orange County Council of PTSAs, is here. And I'm hoping, where is she? There you are. If Ms. Williams would come up to the mic, could you join us and maybe share a few words? Am I putting you on the spot? I hope not. Thank you.
Melanie Williams. I need to give name, address, and all of that. Address and everything.
Just a second. Let me see if Mr. Howard can make sure the mic is turned on. If somebody could. It doesn't seem to be.
Do I need to do all of that address business? Okay.
Let's try again.
Melanie Williams, Orange County Council President. Thank you, Chair Jacobs. September 2021 has been declared National PTA Membership Month by National PTA. And today, PTA's role is more important than ever in connecting parents, teachers, and administrators, providing meaningful family engagement, and supporting critical school needs. During the 2020-21 school year, Orange County Council of PTA successfully chartered three new local units. And we had a total of 11,104 PTA members in 112 units. Throughout the month of September, OCCPTA is encouraging every family member to join their local school PTA, PTSA. We are thankful to the school board for recognizing and providing this proclamation to us. It shows that the school board values the important work of Orange County Parent Teacher Association. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And I want to take a moment. I'm going to call on Ms. Gallo in just a moment because she is so actively involved and has been for so long. But I wanted to take a moment to thank you. You are, the partnership is invaluable. You are always incredibly gracious. The time that you give us to share and interact even through COVID virtually is always, for me, it's rewarding, and I know it benefits all of us. So I just wanted to, it's been a difficult time, but you and the PTSAs have been just like a shining light for all of us. So thank you. Let me hear from Member Gallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so excited that we've declared September National PTA Month. It is something that's near and dear to my heart. I joined the PTA when I was trying to get involved in my daughter's school when she started at Riverdale Elementary here in Orange County. And it was, we call it voluntold. I was kind of voluntold to be on the board. I was just wanting to be a parent helping out my school. But it didn't take me long to truly understand the value of the PTA, what they bring to not only Orange County, but their individual schools. Without the PTAs, many schools couldn't do a lot of the activities they do, from fall fairs to dances to fundraising to helping in the community. It just, the list goes on and on. And they're so invaluable. And we know that parental engagement is so important to a child's success. So I'd like to thank Orange County PTA for all that you do. I'm so appreciative of it. I still sit on the Florida Board of Directors. I am the Educational Pathways Chair. So we actually have a Board of Directors meeting this Saturday. So my Friday, Saturday, and Sunday will be spent across town at a PTA Board of Directors meeting. And each time we get together, we come away renewed and just thankful for all the work that we get to do on behalf of children. So, thank you, Melanie. And I do have, I only had one. I didn't have one for the whole board. I should have got one from Jen when I saw on Friday. But I do have a pen for Dr. Jenkins. It's our new Florida PTA pen. It says, "A Family of Advocates for All Children." So I'm just going to give that a thought.
Wonderful. Thank you. Dr. Jenkins has been pinned. Thank you so much. All right, we are going to move into, well, let me first check. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize?
We do, Madam Chair. Outside of the ones that are sitting in the room, we also have some new administrators. That is Instructional Coach Danielle Stokes, who will be the new AP at Wintermere High School, and Augustine Dammers, who will be the new principal at Silver Pines Academy.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, we will move on to the formal portion of our meeting. So, Dr. Jenkins, let me recognize you for the strategic plan update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, as we do on periodic occasions, updating you on our strategic plan. Dr. Schuler and her team have worked diligently on the social-emotional learning update to be presented today. Mary Bridges, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Jacobs, Superintendent Jenkins, and School Board members. This evening, we will provide a strategic plan update for social and emotional learning. In 2019-2020, our strategic In 2019-2020, our strategic plan was renovated to support the newly developed 2025 vision to ensure every student has a promising and successful future. On this slide, you will see six objectives from the OCPS 2025 Strategic Plan. For students who are experiencing difficulties, development of strong social-emotional skills may help them better navigate and respond to these challenges. For students with mental health concerns, additional services and supports may be needed. The focus of this presentation is on the district implementation of social-emotional learning as reflected in the strategic plan. As the strategic plan developed, social and emotional learning emerged as an area of focus. To support this objective, we introduced the Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning, CASL, framework, to our teachers and administrators to support the needs of our students. This was a first step in introducing a focus on SEL. Then in March, the pandemic began, and people were experiencing serious personal challenges. At the same time, what we've always known and believed about educating our children was changing rapidly. Now, more than ever, supporting social and emotional learning is critical. Take a moment to read the quote on the slide. Findings from research studies indicate that in order to cultivate student social and emotional well-being, you must start with the adults.
Ms. Bridges, I'm going to ask you to continue, even if we continue to have issues with that. Go ahead and continue, please.
Okay.
It is on board docs for anyone watching from home that wants to follow along. I just need you to go ahead and continue.
Okay, thank you. OCPS leadership asked ourselves, "What are we doing to support the social and emotional development of our staff?" This question served as a catalyst for leadership resources we provided to support adults in new and unfamiliar situations. During the 2020-2021 school year, OCPS leveraged social and emotional learning strategies and resources to support a culture and climate for SEL. We accomplished this by implementing a district-wide professional learning series focused on social and emotional learning. Through this series, we supported a focus on climate and culture by introducing a climate and culture continuum designed to support schools in determining SEL climate and cultural needs, and establishing common understanding of centralized school and classroom SEL practices that can be utilized to address SEL climate and culture needs. This focus on climate and culture was further enhanced by implementing adult SEL Canvas courses, an SEL Overview Canvas course for support staff, instructional staff, and administrators, and exemplar daily check-ins that teachers could use with their students. Now, let's take a closer look at how we will support SEL this year. New for this year, OCPS has purchased centralized student SEL curricula for all schools. The SEL resources offered at each grade level are evidence-based programs which align with the core competencies areas from the CASL framework and align with the OCPS school and classroom SEL practices. Using centralized resources allows us to support a common vision and language around SEL. Take a moment to review the curricula OCPS will implement that are listed on the slide. This summer, over 1,200 teachers were trained on the new SEL resources. Student Services will continue to offer trainings on the SEL curricula throughout the year. To complement these resources, the district also purchased Second Step Adult SEL for each school. This program focuses on staff needs by addressing the areas of building trust and coping with stress in this first year of implementation. In order to accentuate staff wellness and promote a healthy start to the school year, a mental health symposium was held in July with a focus on educator well-being and adult social-emotional learning. Over 600 staff participated in this inaugural event. OCPS will continue our district-wide professional learning series, Social and Emotional Learning and Leadership, S E L L, during the 2021-22 school year. The purpose of S E L L is to use cycles of professional learning to support continuous school improvement that integrate academics and social and emotional learning through a distributive leadership model. The work of S E L L is critical and necessary to support the OCPS 2025 Strategic Plan. To implement S E L L, the district utilizes the distributive leadership model pictured on the screen. This professional learning structure is not a train-the-trainer model. It is a model for empowerment and ownership through distributive leadership. OCPS uses this structure to establish a centralized message with a decentralized implementation based on the unique needs of each school or department. We have used this structure over the past five years. To implement and support a distributive leadership model, we use the groups on the screen. The vision-setting groups, including the school board, executive leadership, and focus groups with staff, parents, and students. Content developers comprised of content, pedagogy, and/or leadership experts from a variety of backgrounds to develop the professional learning content. Principal supervisors who monitor, support, and provide feedback on professional learning implementation. Once the content is designed, facilitators are trained to deliver the professional development. Participants attend district-wide sessions and share with the school leadership team when they return to their school sites. Together, they personalize the professional learning to meet the needs of their own school. Collaborative teams participate in the personalized professional learning experiences. Once all adults have begun implementation of the professional learning, the practices permeate to classrooms to reach all students. Teams of teachers and administrators from all schools across each learning community attend three district-wide S E L L sessions. To support our district's distributive leadership model, the sessions are facilitated by select principals, S E L L design team members, who serve as the content developers, and administrators from the Professional Learning Department. Through the distributive leadership model and S E L L, OCPS supports a process for social and emotional learning competencies to be culturally embedded throughout our school and departments. On this slide are the three-year goals for S E L L. We are currently in year two. This year, schools will be focused on integrating and monitoring resources and strategies for social and emotional learning with an emphasis on planning for and implementing the centralized SEL curriculum resources we previously highlighted. And now Anna Williams-Jones will discuss school-wide supports.
To enhance to enhance parent development, OCPS will utilize Engage 360, Learn Where You Live, an initiative that supports families with the skills and strategies to improve family efficacy and student success. The evening sessions will be offered in the geographic learning communities and will be focused on topics specific to the learning community needs. Based on inputs and data from Panorama surveys, a key focus area for Engage 360 will be social and emotional learning. These unique sessions will be built upon and connected to our district-wide parent academies. The parent academy sessions will provide parents with information to expand their knowledge of social-emotional learning and provide them with strategies to build their child's SEL skills. The work of culturally embedding SEL is not only accomplished through professional learning. Student Services staff are available at each level to address the SEL needs of students and to support school teams in SEL implementation. In elementary school, there is a full-time school counselor or a certified school social worker. Each elementary school also has an itinerant school psychologist, an itinerant social worker, and an itinerant mental health counselor. We are pleased to announce that along with our high schools, each middle school will have a full-time licensed mental health counselor or school social worker. High schools received this support prior to the 2019-2020 school year. In addition, each secondary school also has a safe coordinator, school counselors, an itinerant social worker, and an itinerant school psychologist. All these student services personnel can assist schools with their social-emotional learning plans. All these student services personnel can assist schools with their social-emotional learning plans. Student needs have intensified during the pandemic. Therefore, helping students build positive relationships with staff and creating connections to school are a priority for the current year. The support staff we just identified provide tiered levels of support for social and emotional learning interventions. Tiered SEL supports mirror the same process for academic and behavior interventions. Universal supports focus on whole-child development. Supports at Tier One are classroom-based and may be facilitated by the classroom teacher, school counselor, or student services staff. During the 2020-2021 school year, with a grant from CDC, OCPS implemented social-emotional learning clubs to give students opportunities to develop social-emotional skills and build connections with peers and trusted adults. Between September 2020 and February 2022-2021, clubs were initiated in 29 of 47 middle schools and 12 of 20 high schools. Students led each meeting with the purpose of building environments in which the value of each person is recognized. These student-led SEL clubs were recently highlighted as a success story in an article on the CDC website. As the supports needed intensify at Tier Two, group counseling and SEL skills groups can be provided by school counselors or student services staff. A few students may need support at Tier Three. At Tier Three, SEL interventions may be implemented with specific mental health, while specific mental health supports may include individual counseling or very targeted small-group counseling. These Tier Three interventions are provided by student services staff or referred to community agencies. This summer, we created a comprehensive counseling plan to address the continuum of student needs. Services identified in the plan follow the MTSS structure and are provided by school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, and licensed mental health counselors. District staff from the Student Services and Professional Learning Departments are available to assist schools with differentiated district supports. These supports include coaching on implementation of OCPS school and classroom SEL practices, developing differentiated professional learning sessions in partnership with schools, and assisting with S-E-L-L implementation planning and systems for SEL practice. Success around student social-emotional well-being is measured by the established key performance indicators from the OCPS 2025 Plan. To support progress monitoring, OCPS will provide the DEVERO Student Strength Assessment for all students in kindergarten through fifth grade and the Panorama Student SEL Survey for students in third through 12th grades. We will administer and analyze Panorama Teacher SEL Survey data to determine teacher SEL needs for professional development and curriculum implementation, review the SEL instructional practice data, and the increase in proficiency of SEL leadership practices, implement school visits by district staff to analyze the implementation of OCPS school and classroom SEL. These processes will be measured in connection with student achievement data. Thank you for the opportunity to share our current work around social and emotional learning. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Jenkins for her comments.
Thank you for that most informative presentation. Thanks to the staff and all the work that's being done in our schools with principals and teachers and support staff. Members of the board, this is your strategic plan update for this month. It is on your second objective, student social and emotional well-being. Happy to answer any questions, hear your discussion. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let's hear from Vice Chair Gould.
I just want to say thank you to the staff. This has been a journey for us and we did get some great support from the state, especially after some very catastrophic things happened in our state. But we've not only been able to make hay with those, but we have done a lot in building coalition and partnership throughout the community. And I am just admire the work that has gone in from all of the staff and right down to the counselors and the adaptation into the school so that everybody gets trained so we can provide social-emotional learning environment, not only for our students, but for our entire OCPS family. So, thank you. The strides are great and I know they're going to even be greater in the future as we continue on this wonderful path of trying to provide the highest quality of mental health we can for our students.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Byrd?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to echo my fellow board member Gould just said about my appreciation for your department and all the work that you put into this. I don't think, people probably don't even know about all the mental health commissions that, you know, the chair helped start. We have all these subgroups that meet and they meet very regularly, working with the sole purpose of helping our children to be successful. And our number one goal is to get these kids educated, but we cannot get them educated if they are suffering through emotional stress. And so many of them are right now. And as you have said, as we have said from up here at the dais, these kids are going through so much. They already were two years ago, before all of this, and now it's just compounded. So, I am so appreciative that we have you all working so hard and figuring out ways to help them every day because it is life-changing work. It really is. I am thrilled with seeing the parent academy having these subjects on there. I'm thrilled with, I'm really excited about all the middle schools having a full-time licensed mental health counselor. I'm just, you know, I've always said middle school is like the forgotten kids. We always focus on our high schools, we focus on our babies in elementary school, and then our middle schoolers are just kind of left to, you know, survive. And it's probably the hardest time period for kids going through those changes that they're going through. And so, I love that we're going to be providing those resources for them. Very excited about the SEL clubs. I did not know about that, so that was exciting to hear tonight. And congratulations on it being noted in the CDC's newsletter or whatever you said it was. That's very exciting. I love the idea of getting kids to talk. You know, last year, I do focus groups with my high schools and I did them virtually last year, you know. But whenever I sit with these, with these groups of high school kids, last year especially, both of them, both of the times I did, I do it in the fall and I do it in the spring, all they want to talk about was mental health. That was it. It was not school grades. It wasn't, you know, dealing with college applications. It wasn't, can you help us get our cafeteria food changed like it had been in the past? This past year, all they wanted to talk about was needing more help for their mental health. It's on their mind. They want to talk about it. They want to be able to sit and talk to their peers. So, I love the idea that we have these clubs going on. Thank you for that. I do want to just ask a question about the Tier Three. You talked about students needing extra individualized attention and I know I had asked about this before. Some schools have outside organizations that are in the schools. I know that some of the middle schools have it. I don't know what, who else has it. Can you kind of elaborate on who those organizations are and what schools have those?
So, we have at Tier Three, 17 agencies that we partner with throughout the community who are not necessarily housed at the schools, but they come to the schools to provide individual counseling for students. And so, when you look at a tiered system of supports, a one-on-one intervention is really the most intensive. And so, that's why it's classified as Tier Three. But we work with DEVERO and ASPIRE and Children's Home Society and we work with Hispanic Family Counseling. We've really tried to diversify the community partners that we work with to meet the needs of the families of the students that we serve. So, every year, based on what's required from DOE, we look at those agreements and they are modified for any new legislation to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the district as well as the family's rights. And so, those referrals are made and so, they have the opportunity to work with students on our campuses. In addition, at Tier Three, we have OCPS staff that are licensed mental health counselors or school social workers that also provide that individual counseling for students. Sometimes the needs in certain schools are greater and we want to make sure that we don't delay services to students. And that's where the community partnerships come in because they give us the opportunity to serve a larger number of students than we would if we only relied on OCPS employed staff.
Yeah, thank you. I love that. And I think, I think you hit it right on the head when you said making it easy and having easy access for those kids. And, you know, a lot of kids may not have someone to take them to therapy once a week that they really desperately need. So, I love having it on the campuses for them to be able to assist. That's it. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Member Byrd. Member Felder?
Good evening and again, I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. The report was just wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. I'm very excited about what you're doing. I'm, you know, newest member on the board and I recall as a teacher at Edgewater, we had something called Challenge Day so that students could have an opportunity and teachers and administration to really sort out some of the emotional concerns they had. But little did I know until I became a member of this board, how in-depth we do have social-emotional learning. And I'm so happy that Dr. Bridgette Williams has been working along with me along with the city of Orlando, some of our neighborhood centers, which it has not come into full fruition yet. But we've identified some places in District Five where we can work with our children who are possibly suffering from some social-emotional concerns and we need to address them. And as fellow board member Byrd said, middle schools, we seem to sometimes forget. I don't know, but at least we are including them in that. I also, in listening to your report, I listened to you talk about our safe coordinators. I'm so happy to know that you have put in place serious training because sometimes people get in that position and they may not have the kind of training that's necessary with working with some of our students who have some real serious issues. And not just students, teachers and administrators too. They, they need, you know, to kind of lay on the couch, I mean, so to speak. They do. And so, I am very, very happy that we are taking seriously social and emotional learning as it relates to not just learning with students, but this country, but this state, this county. We've gone through some things and we're still going through some things. And it's important that we have things in place to meet the need, the great need that's coming up with our students and members of this district who work in the school system and also who attend our schools. So, again, I'm so excited what we're getting ready to do with District Five, where the talent resides. I'm so excited about District Five and what we're doing in that area. And thank you for your work. I've just kind of put myself coming into your subcommittee meetings with Chairperson Jacobs and you all have welcomed me in and even though I talk a lot and keep you there longer than you expect, but you let me go and do my thing. But anyway, thank you so much and we do appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Kestrel Dennel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you all for spending so much time planning this. I know it's not, I mean, we're seeing it revealed here, but I've, I know we've been in discussions for a while and you've been working on this and getting it ready all summer and before the summer. And I, I recognize that we have additional resources from the state and from our own county that we devoted towards our social and emotional, but I know you still had to stretch them. I know we're still not at what is a workable ratio for all the kids who are in need. So, I'm going to continue to advocate for additional funding because that's, we just still don't have enough. But I appreciate all the efforts that you put into building a framework to, to meet the needs of as many kids as possible. And I also appreciate that you were, you're both so receptive to the questions that we've asked and suggestions we've made because I know there are times when we just, we kept repeating ourselves and making sure that you heard us. And then when you see the plan, I'm happy to see that you did. And I know that when we put the social and emotional goal in our strategic plan, when we added that, that put a big spotlight on your department that you hadn't had before. But you all have stepped up to the challenge and you really make us proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Kestrel Dennel. I also, board members have mentioned how important it is that we support our staff and I wanted to just take this opportunity to give you and the whole team and Ms. Bridges, a shout-out for the great job that you did with our symposium. So, the first mental health symposium that we offered was for our employees and it was awesome. It was just awesome. So, I am so glad I tuned in. I tuned in just kind of to see what you all put together, but I ended up thinking, ooh, I needed this. So, thank you. And thank you for taking everything we've said so seriously. I, we, we came in as a board believing that this was a very, very important issue. The district had, had already recognized that, but who could have predicted how important it would become in, in the midst of a COVID, of a pandemic that we haven't seen in 100 years? So, thank you. Keep up the great work. I know I don't need to say that because you, and it's your, it's your love, it's your passion and it shows. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Jenkins, anything else? Thank you.
Nothing further. Thanks to the team. And I might add, once we pass a consent agenda, those wonderful mental health counselors and school social workers are included in the, in the bargaining group that the governor overlooked in his recognition that this board agreed to take up and certainly recognize them as well. So, thanks to the entire team, not just teachers, but all of our support staff and certainly our administrators as well. Good job, team.
All right. Dr. Jenkins, do you have any changes to the agenda?
There is one change that I just mentioned. That is an addition of Item 1701 as an emergency item. We have an MOU, thanks to our CTA leadership that is present here as well. Request approval of a one-time bonus for select OCPS instructional employees in benefited positions. Again, those are individuals who were overlooked by the governor's $1,000 bonus. That is our addition.
Thank you. Chair finds cause to amend the agenda as suggested by the superintendent. Is there a motion? Thank you. We have a motion by the vice chair. Is there a second? Second by Member Byrd. All in favor of the motion to amend the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And so, that then takes us, Dr. Jenkins, are we on 1701 now? Are we on the approval of a consent agenda? All right. Before we take up the approval of a consent agenda, let me recognize that Mr. Pollard, President of OSBA, is here with us and to offer a few remarks, sir, before we take up the consent agenda. I have a yellow speaker's card. That's my direction, to call you to the, to the podium. It's good to have you with us always, anyway.
This one we already, this is Melanie Williams.
Oh, Melanie.
Yeah.
Oh, Melanie.
Yeah.
All right. Ron Pollard here, 1869 Emmerich Hall Boulevard, Apopka, Florida, 32712. And I came, we jumped the gun a little bit because I was going to speak to the agreement that we signed the other day. And I was going to say, as President of OSPA, the union of the support staff, I want to thank Dr. Jenkins, Chair Jacobs, and all of the school board for this agreement. I would like to recognize my team, Tamika Hampton, that's over there, Michelle Stile, Jasmine Barrera, and my whole bargaining team, as well as your bargaining team, Jim Prasser, I always say it wrong, so he know I'm talking about him, Leanne Blackmore and Scott Lindsay. They really worked hard, and the rest of the team, they really worked hard to hammer out this agreement. I want to say for any support staff that is listening, there was a lot more accomplished in this bargaining session than just money. A lot more. And that's what's important. I also would like to remind you all that it's critical, it is most critical, that to recruit and retain employees, we're going to have to be able to offer competitive salary for our employees. But once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. And you won't get any objections from that on this board in terms of what we need to do. Now we just need to keep working on figuring out how we can do it. And we do it better together because we've got to advocate successfully with the state to get the funding and to get the flexibility so that we can pay our priceless employees a livable wage in our community. That's extremely important. So let's move on then to a vote of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Member Lopez, is there a second? Second by Member Cobert, all in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's take up 1701. Dr. Jenkins?
That is our motion for the emergency item, to approve the one-time bonus for instructional employees that were omitted in the governor's bonus.
All right. Thank you. I will entertain a motion. Motion from Member Gallo, is there a second? Second by Member, sorry, Member Kestrel Dennel, you gotta move fast around here. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We are on Item 18, Dr. Jenkins, information item.
Thank you. Let me again thank those members of our administrative organization for being here tonight, and you were just covered in that consent agenda as well. So thanks for being here, and thank you for all that you do, not just principals, but our food nutrition service managers, transportation managers, all of our administrators. Two things to share with you for my report. Number one, everyone's curious about our vaccination rates. We continue to climb. We have reached 14,878 employees. That is 60.6% of our staff. Now, let me be clear, though, that does not indicate all of our employees that have been vaccinated. It indicates who has actually put in for the incentive. And so we are convinced that we need to have additional support for transportation, for example. I know Mr. Pollard is supportive. We're going to have additional support to make sure they input their information so they can get their $200 incentive. We believe the number is higher than 60%, and we're actually going to have an additional vaccination event to make it convenient for our bus drivers as well. That was probably our lowest area for participation. Very pleased with those numbers. Want to make it to the 90s as soon as possible because we believe it's just safer for our employees. Secondly, as I've indicated to board members, we are on the deadline for indicating to the state regarding whether or not we would like to opt-in for school grades. We have indicated to the state that is not our interest. Last year was a most unusual year, that we are not interested in single-letter grades being placed on schools who had little control over a pandemic and what it did to our instructional time. We are, however, going to request school grades for four of our schools who will be able to exit school improvement status by the state's metrics. And so we're pleased to announce those four schools who, we believe, the state has to do their calculation, we believe they would be in a C-grade category, that is Pine Wood Elementary, Union Park Elementary, Ventura Elementary, and Phyllis Wheatley Elementary. Congratulations to Tashonda Brown Cannon, to, yeah, you can clap.
Guys, 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 I know we like to clap, but when I tell the public they can't clap.
Okay, don't clap.
We're in the fourth. Exactly.
Wave your hand. So congratulations to our school turnaround office, Dr. Tashonda Brown Cannon, Dr. Schuler, Dr. Vasquez, all of their team who worked tirelessly, and to those four schools for being able to exit that school improvement status. That will be the group that we are looking, those four schools that we are looking to for school grades. A few of our charter schools will also be requesting their school grades. And then lastly, we've had a few questions about homecoming dances. I'm going to let principals convey that information, I see Dusty looking at me, convey that information on Friday, and update on what provisions we are making for homecoming dances. We want to certainly exercise caution for the safety of our students. High schools will be working on creative measures and timelines to be announced on Friday. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Envall, any report for the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. On Thursday, you all had a work session at which you directed the Office of Legal Service to come back with some information on some options. Mr. Paul Marini is ready to go through some of those options and just kind of give an update on some of the things that we think are important.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Marini, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You know I was going to do that. So you all can hear me slightly better with just one. Wanted to go through the various and sundry legal challenges that are going on right now and within the state. Most of you all know this, but I just wanted to give an update as to where some of those challenges are and then potential legal avenues that this board would have. So I was asked to address federal law potential avenues. I was asked to address state law potential avenues. And I'm going to start with the federal law avenues. As you all are aware, there's been a lot of activity coming from the federal government over the last week and a half, two weeks. On August the 13th, the Secretary of Education issued a letter to the governor and the Commissioner of Education regarding the executive order, and I just want to read from some of it. It says basically that if Florida doesn't fulfill its responsibilities to make American Rescue Plan ESER funds available to school districts expeditiously, a school district may use ARP ESER funds for pre-award costs dating back to March 13, 2020. In a district, the school district may use ESER funds under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, or the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act for the same purposes. In other words, any threat by Florida to withhold salaries from the superintendent and school board members who are working to protect students and educators can be addressed by using ESER funds at the sole and complete discretion of Florida school districts. That was an August 13th letter that was sent by the Secretary of Education. On August the 18th, the President of the United States issued an order in which I'd want to read just from it briefly. It says, "In Department of Education role in ensuring a safe return to in-person school. In furtherance of the policy set out in Section 1 above of this memorandum, I direct the Secretary of Education to assess all available tools in taking action as appropriate and consistent with applicable law to ensure that governors and other officials are taking appropriate steps to prepare for a safe return for our nation's schools, including not standing in the way of local leaders making such preparations." And he also says, "The Secretary of Education's assessment, subsection A, shall include consideration of whether to take steps towards the initiation of possible enforcement actions under applicable laws." That's against state entities. And the Secretary of Education then put out a publication on his blog, also on the same date, where he talked about various things and actions he could take. And I do want to read from that. Get it to the right place. So amongst the actions the Secretary of Education could take, it says, "For example, the department may initiate a directed investigation if the facts indicate a potential violation of rights of students as a result of state policies and actions." And this, talking about especially students with disabilities. So to the extent that the, any requirement that we don't allow mandatory masking, they could initiate investigations against state education entities to ensure that those policies aren't preventing disabled children from getting a free and appropriate public education as required under IDEA. And it says, "The department will also receive and respond as appropriate to complaints from the public, including parents, guardians, and others about students who may experience discrimination as a result of states not allowing local school districts to reduce virus transmission through masking requirements and other mitigation measures. As always, the department's Office of Civil Rights evaluates allegations of discrimination on a case-by-case basis, looking at the specific facts of each case." As you all know, students can file complaints, and their parents can file complaints with the Federal Office of Civil Rights, to say that they are not getting a free and appropriate public education, and it could be based upon their disability status. So it would be a parent filing a complaint with the Office of Civil Rights in order to initiate that process. And it's not just, normally those cases come against school districts. So normally it would come against us. What that publication from the secretary seems to indicate is that the Department of Education may take steps to investigate state education agencies, i.e. the Florida Department of Education, if they determine that state action is what's causing these students not to get their free and appropriate public education. And then the department, today, August 24th, issued another publication that talked about what kinds of rules and expectations moving forward for the 2021 school year. And it says, "The department recognizes that some parents may have specific health and safety concerns about sending their children back to in-person instruction because of the perceived health risks to students, immediate family, and to other household members, even as parents are also concerned about their children missing the instructional and social, emotional opportunities that come with in-person learning. Therefore, reopening school safeties of utmost importance, SEA, State Education Association, and LEAs, Local Education Agencies, I'm sorry, State Education Agencies and Local Education Agencies, sorry about that, should put in place layered protection strategies, including promoting vaccination and universal and correct mask wearing in schools." So these are the things that are going to guide the federal government when looking at any jurisdiction with respect to whether or not students, especially those with disabilities, are getting a free and appropriate public education. Students can file complaints with the Office of Civil Rights, that's normally how that goes. You all had an executive session yesterday about the Hayes versus DeSantis case, which also involves federal statutes regarding students with disabilities and whether they're being appropriately educated under the ADA and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. I'm obviously not going to go over what we discussed in the strategy session yesterday, but that is something you are also briefed on as well. So that's the federal cases and options that are going on right now. But what is gathering most of the attention is what's going on in the state courts and how that's going to operate. So we have a couple different cases going on right now. One is called McCarthy versus, or Scott, depending on which filing you see it. It's McCarthy or Scott versus DeSantis. That's the case up in Tallahassee in Leon County Circuit Court. That's the case where the court decided that the parents had standing to bring their lawsuit claiming various constitutional violations. And they have had a hearing for the last two days. They are continuing to have a hearing. The court expects to issue an order in that case, he said this week. So as soon as we get a hold of that, obviously, we will provide it to you all and analyze it to see if it helps us, harms us, does nothing to us. But as soon as we get that order, we will see. But I did want, one of the options that I was asked and tasked to discuss was the filing of an injunction by this board, right? And so the McCarthy/Scott case versus DeSantis is an injunction action, right? And two of its counts would be something that would probably mirror what we would want to do. One of the counts says that the Department of Health's emergency rule violates school boards' rights under Article 9, Section 4B, to control, operate, and supervise our schools. The other says the Department of Health's rule is arbitrary and capricious in violation of the due process clause of the Florida Constitution under Article 1, Section 9. Now, I'm not going to go in-depth into what I told you all on August 10th, but if you remember, that's the Collier, School Board of Collier County case that I cited to you that says, "School boards do not have the right to bring constitutional challenges with respect to various laws or rules," because you all, as school board officials, have to presume the constitutionality of those acts. So we wouldn't necessarily have standing to do that. However, the court held the parents had standing to assert such claims, and he's going to decide that one way or the other. We're going to get a decision, I think, this week. And whether it gets, whether the parents prevail, whether the state prevails, I would suspect we will see an appeal rather quickly up to the First District Court of Appeals on that issue. And even if we could bring that case, there's a standard for filing an injunction, and I'm going to go into the four standards, and this is technical legal stuff, but I think you all wanted to hear it. In order to get an injunction, a moving party has to show a substantial likelihood of success on the merits, the likelihood of irreparable harm absent the entry of the injunction, a lack of an adequate remedy at law, and that injunctive relief will serve the public interest. And the courts have also said, "Look, the purpose of a temporary injunction is to maintain the status quo." Part of our problem, if we filed the motion for injunction, if we move for an injunction under those constitutional bases, you don't have a likelihood of success on the merits because the first thing they're going to say is, "You, school board, don't have standing to bring the case." And that would be it. They would toss us out right then and there, in my opinion. So that would be the problem, and you wouldn't get to whether you have an adequate remedy at law, you know, whether the injunctive relief will serve public interest. They will say, "School boards, you don't have that standing." So quite frankly, it didn't seem like a reasonable option to us because, one, you'd probably get thrown out almost immediately, and, two, the identical relief you are seeking is being brought by an action by parents that is currently in court and much further along than we are. So we didn't think that is as viable an option to bring you all, but we wanted to address it just to make sure. Now, also, that would require us to litigate up in the Second Circuit in Leon County because if we were to do that, because of course, the governor, who we would have to sue, and the Commissioner of Education, the State Board of Education have home venue privilege, so the case would have to be brought up there. Now, the more viable challenges would be challenges under the Florida rulemaking statute. For those of you who are not aware, Chapter 120 of Florida statutes is the Administrative Procedures Act. I said it in English, sorry about that. And the Administrative Procedures Act has rulemaking under the statute, and it does certain things. It allows for emergency rulemaking. So it says if there's danger to the immediate danger to public health, safety, and welfare that an agency may engage in emergency rulemaking, shorten the normal time period where you have to have at least 28 days' notice, and you have to have a rule development workshop, an agency can immediately adopt a rule through a shortened process that would last for 90 days, and then the agency can engage in regular rulemaking. So can you challenge an emergency rule? Yes. Yes, you can. Now, the standards on that are very, very difficult. You have to prove that the procedure that was utilized was wrong. And there's another case that talks about, even if we're talking about, we're talking about an emergency rule, we're not going to decide whether the substance of that emergency rule is right. We're just going to see if the procedures were utilized incorrectly. And this is where another case comes in that shows that also that this is an avenue that's being looked into. There is a case by the state NAACP that's been filed with, against the Florida Department of Health. That's a case that's been filed directly to the Fourth District Court of Appeals. It was filed on Friday. And so they are appealing directly to the Court of Appeals and down in the Fourth DCA in Fort Lauderdale to say, "This rule did not comport with the emergency rulemaking procedures." Now, the court has said, "We are going to take that case up on an emergency basis. State, you have to respond by August 30 to the initial petition. The NAACP, you got five days thereafter to respond to the state's argument." So by September the 4th, that case will be fully briefed and before the Fourth District Court of Appeals. So an emergency rule challenge led, to the extent this board was going to contemplate it, this case, like the parents' case up in Leon County, is going to get there quicker, and you will get a decision quicker, one way or the other. and you will get a decision quicker, one way or the other. So a lot of the avenues that we potentially could have had, people have already advanced it beyond us, and you're going to get rulings, one way or the other, before we, quite frankly, would be in a position to file pleadings. So that's the emergency rulemaking. And then there is the rulemaking statute itself, where there are various bases upon which you can challenge a rule. That's in 12056. And that statute says, "Any person substantially affected by a rule or proposed rule may seek an administrative determination of invalidity of the rule on the ground that the rule is an invalid exercise of delegated legislative authority." Now, this rule, unlike constitutional rules, which have laid down that you all don't have standing, this rule says, "A person is that can bring a rule challenge also includes an agency," and the definition of agency within the Administrative Procedures Act includes educational units, i.e. school boards. So that rule specifically gives us standing. Now, with respect to, and then there's the other argument. So when we were listening to the Broward and Latshaw County cases before the Florida Department of Education, Board Member Johnson, Marva Johnson, said to the commissioner, to the chair, she said, "Chair, what would happen if a school board didn't like the rule?" And the chair said, "Well, the school board could have participated in the emergency rulemaking by giving its comment." Also, post-rule, the school board could also file a rule challenge, and they would have that ability to do so. So I don't think the state can come back and argue, the State Department of Education could argue that we didn't have the authority to file a rule challenge because their chair admitted in a public meeting that, yes, we would in fact have that authority to do so. So now, we have standing to file a rule challenge. What are the bases? What is an invalid exercise of delegated legislative authority? It's defined in various ways. "The agency has materially failed to follow the applicable rulemaking procedures or requirements set forth in the statute," meaning notice, comment, period, "how it was done was not done correctly procedurally. The agency has exceeded its grant of rulemaking authority, citation of which is required by statute." So what that means is Florida's a little bit different than federal law. Federal courts say agencies can make rules unless Congress has basically prohibited them from doing it. In Florida, under Florida law, the agency can only make rules if the legislature says there's, you have a specific rulemaking authority to do so. So they will look at that and say, "What is the statutory basis giving you the right to adopt rules?" You all, as school board members, are specific statute that says, "Listen, you get to adopt rules in furtherance of your duties under statute and law," right? The third basis, "The rule enlarges, modifies, or contravenes the specific provision of law implemented," and again, citation to which would be required. The fourth, "The rule is vague, fails to establish adequate standards for agency decisions, or rests unbridled discretion in the agency," meaning they write a rule that basically says the agency can, you know, can do whatever it wants, and there's no meaningful standard by which to judge their actions. Fifth, "The rule is arbitrary or capricious," and they define what arbitrary and capricious means. A rule is arbitrary if it is not supported by logic or necessary facts. A rule is capricious if it is adopted without thought or reason or is irrational. So that is a basis upon which you may challenge it. Finally, and F, "The rule imposes regulatory costs on a regulated person's county or city which could be reduced by the adoption of less costly alternative." That would not be at issue here. So those are the bases, the five bases upon which we can file a rule challenge. Now, this board wanting to have legal options directed us, and Ms. Enval and I, to try to investigate those. We got on the telephone, we made contact with the lawyers that are representing Broward County in their rule challenge, and we had a conversation with them on Friday. They went over the bases upon which that Broward is going to file their rule challenge, and they had that conversation with us. So there are colorable claims that they're going to make under their rule challenge, meaning they are something that an administrative law judge should be deciding one way or the other, not getting thrown out preliminarily, but through a standing challenge or some other dismissal motion. So what we were, Ms. Enval and I, after having the conversations with that lawyer, if that's the route that this board wants to go, you know, we probably don't want to repave the road if we can avoid that. If somebody's already got that train moving down the tracks, we would probably want to either intervene. We would have to look at the exact rule challenge that Broward files to see if some of the bases are applicable to us or not, depending on where we are, because we don't want to copy a pleading or, you know, adopt a pleading through a motion to intervene, and then all of a sudden, some of the things that Broward is saying would not be applicable to this board. So we want to look at that to see if that's a reasonable option. We're going to, once they file it, we're going to have conversations with him if this board so directs us to file a rule challenge, him being the lawyer, then the law firm, Greenberg Trust, to see whether or not that's what we're going to do. But we do think we have some colorable claims. I'm not going to sit here, what I'm not going to do is tell them here, because I think it would be inappropriate. It would give the state our potential legal strategies in a public meeting. That would be something that I would suggest Ms. Enval and I work through with the lawyer, and then maybe once a filing occurs in the case, we bring it back to you all for a strategy session, because I think that would be more appropriate. I don't want to give our legal strategy out here. But that would be an avenue by which this board, if it wanted to challenge the rule, it could do so. So that's the rulemaking route that the board could go to challenge this. I think Ms. Enval and I are both of the agreement that the rulemaking challenge is the most, by far, the most viable. In fact, I think it's the only viable way to get where we want to go. And I would be happy to answer any questions you all have at this point.
Thank you, John. Great, great presentation. What a great update. I have one quick question, and I'll call in vice chair. If the board wishes to take or provide direction, I know you have authority to enter litigation without the board's approval and then bring it back for either radification or other direction. Does the board need to give you any direction, and are we poised to do that?
Under your policy BDG, which is the School Attorney Legal Services, it provides that the general counsel may authorize the initiation of the action if the board chair is notified in advance and the matter is subsequently presented at a regularly scheduled board meeting or at an executive session of the board for a determination of whether to continue the action. So I would, of course, I would, I would like a thumbs up, if you will, or just, you know, general head nods if you're interested in pursuing that. We can certainly, because I think the policy was written, this policy was written specifically because some of these things are very timely, and I may not be able to wait two weeks till our next meeting, and so if we can jump in when we can jump in, then we'll be a named party, and we could have an executive session, just like we did yesterday for that named party litigation.
Thank you. I wanted to get clarification before opening up to board comments. We'll start with Vice Chair Gould.
So before I come back to that, I'm going to take a slight left turn because we had a lot of emails and testimony and things. I was exploring, I had talked last week about the surgical approach to the masks, and I had spoken with the superintendent this week, and I think there is a way to increase our protection without a blanket mask policy. And I think that's based on the data in our schools and in our communities. If we can say, School X, I won't call any of my own schools out, School X has a rate of cases that is, you know, higher than the 5% or whatever that percentage is, that we monitor the percentage, that we would mandate masks in that school until that percentage comes back down. In our brainstorming this thread through, we don't think that violates the governor's intent of his rule, because it is in response to a very specific area, and we're not blanketing it, because I have schools with very, very low cases, and I look at them daily, you know, on our little chart. So that may be something for us to consider, so I wanted to share that. Now, back to this. I am in favor of going ahead and moving forward with, with action against the rule. And the reason is, I feel like, just as we did tonight, and we have been for the last year and a half, listening to our community and our constituents and working with our local hospitals and our health departments and our municipal partners, we know what's going on in this community. And so a rule for one of the largest geographic states that is blanketed across the state and treats every single county exactly the same, and our numbers, while they're not where we want them to be, and they're much higher than we want to see them, were not as high as Miami-Dade, were not as high as other areas, and we need to be able to represent the people who voted us in. They can vote us out when they're not happy, but we need to be able to represent the people who voted us in. So I believe, and I think there's precedent, even in other states as I'm watching it unfold, while Florida's unique and we have our own governing rules with our own constitution, that the way that that rule was done undermined our constitutional authority. And I know we can't challenge it on that basis because of the way that we kind of report through the Constitution. But it does. So I'd love to pursue that on the state. However, I'm in support of that. I do think that we also need to understand when a rule, because we get funded both by the federal government and by the state government. We need to better understand, and I don't think I quite got this yet, why is it that we cannot challenge a rule that is in direct conflict with the ADA or the federal regulations? Why does the state trump that? And how, and we're in the middle of it. You know, we're in the middle of making the choices between the way we want to interpret some things versus what's coming out of the federal work, we being Florida, not we being the school boards. So this is, this is what I don't understand. Why would we not try to pursue, you know, you have caused us to now break a federal law or a federal rule versus a state rule?
Let me see if I can give the best explanation I think I can to this. The way federal laws are normally written, especially in the education area and in the Americans with Disabilities Act, it is normally written in a way that aggrieved parties, meaning the people who receive services, are the ones that bring actions against the persons who have committed the, committed the violations. So normally, with the way, and with the way the rule is, the statutes are defined, it says, you know, person, "No person shall be deprived of any benefit from any educational institution by reason of their disability," right? So it says, "No person shall be deprived by an educational institution." So that means the person who's been deprived, i.e. the student, gets to bring an action against an educational, the educational institution. Normally, that is us. So with the way the statutes are written, they don't write them in the reverse, in the reverse, where they say, "The educational institution gets to sue the state."
Okay. I follow that logic, but, but in this case, I have not even heard people who want the mask options want children who are vulnerable and have a higher risk to be at risk. And right now, our ability to protect those kids and provide them education is not there. So are we not a party to the protection of those kids with disability when we might not be able to provide them the absolute safest environment possible?
In my opinion, not with the way those statutes are written federally. Most of the times, they don't contemplate a situation like this. And normally, the judges are going to apply the law and the definitions within statutes as they're written. And they're going to apply the statutes as written to say, "An aggrieved party has the right to file a suit if an educational institution violates their rights." This is not something that the courts, federal courts are usually equipped to deal with. I've never seen a case where, if the contemplation is, "This board sues," and who would this board bring the action against? It would have to be this board bringing the action against, I guess, the Florida Department of Education for violations of, you know, the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I just don't think a court, in looking at how those statutes are defined, are going to say, "We would have," that word again, "we would have standing to assert that suit."
Thank you.
And to add to that, a lot of times, there's this phrase called "comity" in the law, meaning, C-O-M-I-T-Y, not C-O-M-E-D-Y, sorry. So "comity" is, federal courts will give deference to state courts and state executives and state legislatures on matters of state law. So if we were to sue the Florida Department of Education in a federal court, they would say, "This seems to be a state dispute, and this is not the appropriate forum for us to be resolving this. It needs to go back." This is a matter of state law.
Thank you. John, question for you. On the McCarthy case, if the injunction's granted, does that, would that apply throughout the state?
Depends on how they write it, but I would assume the answer would be yes, because what they are asking to do is enjoin the governor's executive order and the DOH rule.
Okay.
So if they rule it invalid, then it would apply statewide.
I think, let me begin by explaining why we are not poised to vote on the imposing a mask mandate right here, because member, Vice Chair Gould, has raised an alternative suggestion. And I want to be clear, because last Thursday, when we met, I heard a lot of support for bringing forward a vote, one way or the other, on a mask mandate. And I heard from our general counsel that in order to do that, we would need to change our rule, because our rule didn't provide enough flexibility for the board, if you actually read the language of the rule, it doesn't say that the superintendent, that we can direct the superintendent to exercise the authority. It says that she can exercise the authority we've given her if the CDC or another jurisdiction or other jurisdictions provide guidance that mandates a mask mandate, okay? And we had a great deal of discussion at the table when we adopted that, in terms of what that meant and how we would like to interpret it, and that this board believed that we were going to be able to just direct the superintendent to make that call. But after the conversation that Ms. Enval and I had on Friday about what the actual language said, and the question about whether or not we could do that, or whether that required a change in the policy itself, the decision was made that if we were going to go that route, we would have an emergency rulemaking meeting. And that is the reason it's not on this agenda. And I want to clarify that while I don't like that answer, I do agree with it, because what we said here at the table about being able to direct the superintendent to make that call is not in the policy. And in spite of the fact that we had lots of testimony, I have to think about it from the perspective of, if I'm a member of the public and I've read the language of the rule that we have to advertise before we vote on it, rule policy is the same thing. If I'm a member of the public and I read it and I'm comfortable with that language, and I don't show up because I'm comfortable with that language, I don't anticipate that the board is going to have a conversation and put some other provision in that's not in the language. So while it felt, to be honest with you, a bit like a gut punch when we talked on Friday, I believe Ms. Enval was absolutely right, that all the conversation that we have up here might, might hold up in court, but in all probability, the right way to do this is to have is to have a public meeting, advertise it, the 48 hours, I think that we need to advertise it, go through the absolute certain process. And one of the reasons I feel so strongly about this is that what I believe is wrong with the FDOH rule, and I'm going to try to, uh, try to take the advice of Mr. Palmorini and not go into too much detail, I probably already did last week, I think there, procedurally, they made mistakes. And I find it both hypocritical and problematic for us to not go through the strictest process of doing this, so that we can defend that we did it right. That means that, that's a 48-hour delay from tonight or tomorrow morning. And that's 48 hours to ensure that if we make that decision, it should be defensible, with the exception of those who want to challenge that we're not in, abide, that we're not abiding by the state rule, which is why I think it is imperative that we simultaneously challenge the state rule, so that we're on record that we do not believe the state rule is binding on us or properly adopted and that we have gone through the proper process. I'm not finished with my comments, but Member Gallo is coming unglued over there. So let me call on you for a second to ask whatever questions you have for me.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, and I am sorry, because I am, I am a little confused, because I had a different conversation with Ms. Enval last night. But to that point, if what your state is correct and we have to have an emergency meeting, then we need to unmask our teachers immediately, because we've already violated the policy. We've already violated it. We, we, we masked all of our staff based on that policy. So if we did that and that's an error, then we need to unmask our teachers.
I'm sorry, guys. Guys, guys, you remember the rules, okay? Thank you. I know, you forgot.
And I'm not advocating for unmasking anybody, that's not my point. It's more to the procedure of the policy. And either we're in violation and we can do it, or we're not.
Ms., um, Ms. Member Gallo? Thank you. So, Ms. Enval, did we do that based on board direction? Please?
I don't know. I don't, I don't think I was here that week. I'm not sure what, how it was done.
So... Got consensus from the board, Madam Chair. She, she talked to each one of us individually, got consensus. And we masked, we did mandatory mask for all of our, all of our, um, teachers. And then there was another consensus when we masked and we made an optional with, with an opt-out note only. That was by consensus too, which all of that now, if what you're saying, and Ms. Enval's saying is true, is in violation of our policy. So I'm just trying to point out that we, we have violated the policy. So, we need to fix all of the violation if we can't talk about mask and get to a consensus tonight on what we want to do for students.
Ms. Enval, I, I understand what you're saying. And what, what I hear, what I sense is in front of us now is to give possible direction to the superintendent on another approach. And so, I need clarity on this issue. And I thought I had clarity on this issue, but we need to have this discussion here at the table. So, is it the language that is written in our rule? Or is it the conversation that we have, that we had here that governs? And in the event there's a challenge, which I can 100% promise, there will be a, a, a challenge. And, and folks, if I had my way, in spite of the number of people here who strongly disagree with me, if I had my way, I would impose a mask mandate immediately. And, guys, thank you, um, for trying really hard not to boo or hiss or scream or applaud. That's what I would do. So my comments here have nothing to do with what I want to do. It has everything to do with making sure whatever we do sticks. Whatever decision this board makes needs to be defensible. Wasting our time doing something that we can't defend is a disservice to the public and trying to rush something to get it done quickly and doing it the wrong way is a disservice if we can't defend it. But I need a solid answer here, and I'm not feeling confident that I'm getting that. Ms. Enval?
I think the answer is, the, in, you know, the recommendation that you amend the policy. Right now, your language says specifically, in the event the CDC or other governmental entities issues updated guidance which mandates more restrictive face covering requirements, the school board authorizes the superintendent to implement the more restrictive face covering requirements in accordance with that guidance.
So...
And I do believe that when you were going through the rulemaking process, we had a number of public comment, we did it in June and July, and there were, none of this, um, emergency order rules, none of those were in place during that time. You had the discussion, um, I believe the board said it specifically, that you would provide direction to the superintendent. The superintendent said she would seek input from each of you on the board. But that language did not, and she, and she has. I mean, we've had, I know you've had those individual things, but you did not put that language into your policy.
No, folks, I'm sorry, but the point is, we can say whatever we want, but we didn't change our policy.
And you have not voted to change your policy. That's why that's, there was a number of, uh, reports that said we were voting on masks tonight and there was no, it's not on the agenda, there was no vote to be taken.
Uh, Ms. Enval, the board's not following you. I'm sorry, but I can tell from the comments that, that this is not sinking in what the issue is here. So, if everybody will just try, just pause, listen, what is the issue right now?
I, I think the issue brought up by Member Gallo is whether or not the, the mask mandate that was imposed on our students with the opt-out and/or the mask mandate that was imposed on employees was in accordance with the board policy. Because there was no board vote on it, there was just direction provided to the superintendent. Is that the issue?
Why is, why is that a problem for you? Why is that?
Member, uh, Vice Chair Gould asked for a point of order.
So, I hope I'm using this right, because I've never used it before. But, the, the point of order is, we never voted. We advised, which is within the policy. So please define the policy. We, we, the superintendent has the right, we gave her the authority to do what she needed to do at the school level. Her choice is to always do it in cooperation with her board to the best of her ability. We never voted, we provided comment, and I think it was actually consensus, based on the dictionary, that night. So, could you, could you please explain the authority the superintendent has in that policy?
Point of order. That's exactly what I wanted Ms. Enval to do, because the board does not know what that language says. So why don't you read it one more time?
The language in your policy specifically says, "In the event the CDC or other governmental entities issues updated guidance which mandates more restrictive face covering requirements, the school board authorizes the superintendent to implement the more restrictive face covering requirements in accordance with that guidance."
Let me ask again, let's go backwards through this. I do not like this language. I didn't like it then. I brought it forward then. I still don't like it, but it is what it is. So, under what circumstance did we delegate that authority to the superintendent? What is, what's the pre-wak, was it? What has to happen?
I believe the, so, so...
What does the language say? What has to happen?
I think you're going to have to, so you have the CDC guidance, right? And then you have other governmental entities which issue updated guidance, which mandates more restrictive face covering.
Read the whole thing, because they're not separate.
"In the event the CDC or other governmental entities issues updated guidance which mandates more restrictive face covering requirements, the school board authorizes the superintendent to implement the more restrictive face covering requirements in accordance with that guidance."
So, the problem is, and we discussed this openly, and I had a huge problem with the fact the word mandate was in there, because the language says, "In the event," that the CDC or other jurisdictions, guidance mandates. And I was trying to determine, is mandate the operative word or is guidance the operative word? And I believed, we went forward with the idea that mandate, guidance that mandates, to me was like guidance that warrants. And so based on that, I believe that we've acted appropriately. And based on that, I thought we could come back here tonight and give direction, as we have done every other time. And it wasn't until I was told on Friday that that language prohibits us from doing this unless we go through a rulemaking change, that I put a pause on this. So now I am, I, I don't know where we're going.
Madam Chair, if, just for my own clarity, if I could just ask a question. So, one of two things, in my mind, has to happen. Either we're in violation of the law by mandating it for teachers and the opt-out that we put in for our students, or we are allowed to have this conversation tonight and give the superintendent direction. It's one of two things. Either we were wrong, we violate a policy and we need to fix it, or we can have this discussion tonight and we can give direction to the superintendent. Those are our two choices.
I agree.
Is that, is that, is that a good assessment?
Okay. I, I, that's a perfect summary, and I completely agree. Let's hear from Member Kesterdahl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems like we just can't get out of our own way. The CDC has given us updated, uh, recommendations, mandates. Mayor Demings spoke yesterday saying it is time for the school board to, uh, increase their mandates for masks. That's another governmental entity. He mentioned when asked if he had spoken to the superintendent, he's indicated that he had. I've spoken to the superintendent. I believe she is going to make a recommendation tonight that we can discuss. And I don't see a problem going forward with that recommendation as we all, we, with, are weighing in with where we are. And if not, then may I recommend for the third time, an emergency meeting, so that we can discuss this and get it done. I am so, I'm so frustrated, my head is about to explode on, in this discussion. We, we are wasting so much time and our kids and community are getting sicker. And our community is looking, looking at us
For direction.
For direction and leadership, and we're failing, we're failing them. So I, it is my belief, strong belief, that the superintendent has the authority, we've given her, to come up with a plan for, uh, a, a universal district-wide mask mandate. And we can discuss the pros and cons as a board, and that doesn't violate anything. She works for us, that's her job description. It's not just this one policy.
Guys, guys, no, no outbursts, we've heard you.
And at the same time, I'd like to challenge the rule. I would like to sign on and challenge the rule, because this is, it's just not right. And I, I agree, we need to challenge the rule, we need to talk to Broward, maybe hire our own outside legal counsel to, and challenge.
Guys?
Excuse me.
No.
Challenge away. Challenge away.
Guys, guys. Okay. You're out of order. You're out of order, guys. We listened to you.
Moving on.
You're out of order.
Moving on. I, in addition to us discussing this topic of challenging the rule and also whether or not we are abiding by our own policy, I think I'd, I would like to hear from Dr. Jenkins about where do we stand? What is her, what has she determined? What is she recommending? Thank you.
Okay. Member, Member Bird, do you want to speak, or do you want to hear from Dr. Jenkins first?
Um, Dr. Jenkins can speak first.
All right, thank you. Dr. Jenkins?
There are two critical issues. If you recall, when we talked about this policy, there were specific questions asked of the general counsel. First, I made a statement saying, you can believe I will be conferring with the board. I would not make a decision for this entire commi- community and our schools on my own that I would confer with board members. Was also posed, I believe the question was to Ms. Enval, if the board has authority to direct the superintendent. Beyond the policy, I believe the answer was yes, the board has authority to direct the superintendent. The issue now is, if you are going to go through rulemaking challenge, will you be challenged in your own rulemaking authority? That did not come up previously. And so I did consult with board members. We did put in a mandate for our employees. We did put in a 30-day mandate with an opt-out for our students, based on that consultation. I think you have to rely heavily on your legal counsel. If you are going to proceed in a rulemaking challenge, you need to rely heavily on their legal guidance. I am not your attorney. But I also think you can consider whether or not you believe it's worth the risk to move on without an additional emergency meeting to amend your rule. That is the board's decision. When it comes down to the pathways you can take, you can either have a sweeping mandate that says you want all students in masks, or you might consider, I need the board's input on this as well, you might consider what Member Gould mentioned, the more surgical, uh, data-based approach, based on schools and where they stand in their data, uh, where they stand in their, um, the number of positive cases or the number of various measures that might be in place. Both of those are, uh, direction that I could hear from the board tonight. You have got to rely on your legal counsel if you are going to pursue legal means to challenge the state. And so I figure that's, that's probably about all I should stay, say at this point. I recall the conversation. I recall that the, the actual policy does not speak specifically to the board directing and the question being posed. I assured you I would not move without consulting you. And general counsel also conceded that the board always has authority. I, I always say I have eight bosses. And the general counsel conceded that the board can always direct the superintendent. That is how we proceeded through the last two issues. I think you're in a bit of a conundrum if you're going to challenge rulemaking, that you make sure your own processes are as clean as possible. And that's something you have to rely on your legal counsel for.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Member Bird?
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm so incredibly frustrated right now. Um, I don't understand why here we are five days after our work session when we were discussing doing this. It was brought up, oh no, we can't do this today. We can't give the superintendent direction today because we need to publicize it or we need to, um, notice it, or whatever the reasons were. Even though I disagreed with that, because I feel like it was in our policy to give her direction and she has every right to take direction from her board at any time. So, that was five days ago. If this was how we felt, if we knew that we needed to do this, why wasn't an emergency meeting called? I actually asked for an emergency meeting to be called on Friday, the 13th. And that was, what, two weeks ago? The first time I asked for, um, this mandate to be changed was on July 30th, before school even started, because I could tell this was just going to be a mess with the way this Delta variant is spreading in our community. I am so frustrated that we are sitting here again debating this. I don't understand. If, Chair, if you had a conversation with the council on Friday night, why didn't you call an emergency meeting Saturday morning and get it on, on deck for Monday?
Can I answer that?
Yes, you may.
So, not unlike you, on the 27th, I called for a meeting, for an emergency meeting, so we could change this. At that time, there wasn't support for that. There is now, I think. Member Kesterdahl contacted, sent an email asking for an emergency meeting. Um, and I think she was asking for that to be scheduled like on Saturday or something. At that, do you remember that?
I asked for one.
Right.
With 48 hours.
Right. Okay, it might have been Sunday or Monday, right?
Monday after our executive session.
Okay, I don't know about that one. I know about the, the one on Friday. And I contacted Ms. Enval, because I can't respond directly back to you, because that would be a conversation, and asked her about scheduling an emergency meeting. And the response was that we needed to change the policy, and in order to change the policy, she would need to advertise it. She didn't know what exactly to put in the policy. So, to advertise something with a 48-hour notice, it had to be exactly right. I assumed that, I don't get to call board members and tell them directly. I assumed that you all were aware of this problem. I assumed that the board knew that we were not coming in here today with the ability to give direction.
No, I had a conversation last night with our general counsel, and that was not the information I was given. So, um, so I'm, I, I disagree. I disagree, and I understand what you're saying. The word that you're stuck on here is mandates
Yes.
in the policy. It should have read recommend.
Yes.
That's all it is. It's one word.
I agree.
And that could be subject to debate, actually, if whether or not there's, we're saying updated guidance, which mandate's more restrictive. I think it's a language thing. I don't think it's, we all knew what we were talking about because we clarified it when we made the rule. And besides that, I would actually like to know if, the, so you're telling me if we were having an issue in the community with, I don't know, kids bringing something to school that was dangerous or whatever, that we couldn't as a board direct the superintendent to make a rule that they are not allowed in school? We'd have to bring it and change, what, and have a meeting about it? I, I feel like we should be able to direct the superintendent. I mean, our number one issue here is safety, and this is not, this is, this is a safety issue. I don't understand why we can't just direct the superintendent to make this change. Also, the CDC, we, we very easily could say that the CDC and other government agencies, as she said, have directed us to make this change. So I'm frustrated that we're here and we're debating this again, and I don't know. I want to, I think, I think there's just been a lot of miscommunication, and I think it needs to be resolved.
Ms. Enval, do you want to respond?
I, I think it would be helpful. I, I mean, the board pre, does, and I have said it before, the board can and it does direct the superintendent to act. You have Board Policy BDD, which is Board Superintendent Relations, which specifically says that. I think the issue here, and you do it at regular scheduled meetings, you also do it independently. You know, can you look into this for me? Can you look into that? It's email, it's everything. And you're, you're bringing forth constituent issues or issues that you find on your own. So you can all do that. At this point, as it relates to this particular policy, out of an abundance of caution, and given our potential legal strategy, if we're going to do a rule, a rule challenge, I would recommend that you amend the policy. We can, what that would look like would be, a red line draft could be posted tomorrow with an emergency meeting on Friday, if that makes sense. Because we have to do 48 hours, so 48 hours from today would be Thursday at 6:30. If, I mean, I still need to post it. The red line draft, I think, could fix that mandates language, and we could get input from the board now what you want that to look like, and we can do that. That would probably be the cleanest way. It would, the policy amendment would include specifically direction that the board can provide direction to the superintendent regarding the more restrictive face covering requirements. And then you could then, at that same meeting, provide that direction if you want to do that on Friday. But this was not on the agenda. We can always have a discussion. We always have discussion after school board meetings. But if you're going to actually take a vote and make a policy change, you have to be able to advertise that and let the public know.
Member Bird, any, any other questions? Thank you.
I'll let someone else speak.
Thank you. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I feel the same way. I feel very disappointed. I have conversations, I send emails, I even posted in social media because I was sick with COVID as well. So I want my constituents to know that I was trying to be their voice. So when I, when I made the decision to support this policy, I even asked, "Do we have to make another meeting to make, to do the, the mask mandate?" And the answer was no, because the policy is perfect. The policy provides opportunity to us to do the recommendations, to recommend to the superintendent, and she will make the decision based on the CDC guidelines, guidelines and the government entities, issues, no, guides, guidance. So now I see that the CDC, on July, and I have, on July 24, the CDC Control and Prevention recommended that all students in kindergarten to 12th grade should wear a mask when they return to classroom for the new school year. So when I see the numbers grow, I make the call, and I say, "No, this is terrible." This is, so I, I try to get in contact all the time, but I never, you know, the, the conversation that we are having today, that's not what I had before. So I always believe in this policy. That's why I voted in favor, because I think that, yeah, based on the numbers that we had at that moment, of course, we can have optional. But then when the numbers grow up, I say, "No, there is no way." So then, when I tried to analyze the numbers in the dashboard, we have 520 employees, reported confirmed cares on campus since August 2, is 520 employees, 1,810 students, and 13 vendors. But the highest numbers are for elementary schools. So when I heard parents saying, you know, "It's a low rate of, of children, it's 000.1," what, every single life matters. This is not about 000. No, 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 but every child matters. What I'm gonna say, okay, because it's very low, I don't care. I'm gonna leave it like that because, you know, if one child passes away, it's okay. Is that okay? I don't think it's okay, and I think that the executive order is very unfair. It's not, it's not, it's not fair. It's, it's not, it's not respecting the child, everybody's life. Not even, not only the students, but also the staff members, not even the elected officials, not even the numbers. And, and, and the secret border tried to be one size fits all. When we have different numbers in different counties, I don't think that is strategic at all. So when I see all the counties, the districts, I'm challenging the rule, Alashua, Hillsboro, Leo, and Miami, Broward. So why we're, we're not doing the same thing? I, I think that we are trying to avoid, and not the school board. I don't know what is happening in the, in the environment, and I feel very frustrated at this moment as well, because it looks like we are trying to avoid the situation that we are facing in terms of numbers. The numbers are speaking by itself. I don't think that this should be a discussion. So I just have a simple question, and is, can we make a decision tonight? Yes or no, and why? That's the only question that I have. Can we make a decision tonight? Yes or no, or why? To the legal counsel, please.
Ms. Enval.
Are you asking whether you can make a decision on the policy language, or are you making?
No, the decision on mask mandate.
I would say no, because your policy does not authorize it. The plain language of the policy right now would have to be changed.
So, but for direction, can we, can we speak to the superintendent and make a recommendation so we can see the changes?
You can certainly do that, and we can do the emergency policy. I can advertise tomorrow, we can bring it Friday. You can, at the same time, make those. She can, she has, gonna have to look into what she can do.
So we have to go into the, the emergency meeting then? There is no way that we can make any decision tonight?
I don't think there is. You, I mean, you can't, you didn't, wasn't advertised on a public meeting?
Who, who can? Because I, I, I heard different, I heard a few school board members saying that she can make a decision tonight. Is that true or not? The legal counsel, please, can you answer that question? I'm so sorry. Can, can she make a decision tonight? Yes or no, and why?
So you did not add any of this discussion, you did not have mask mandates on the board, on the agenda to make a discussion, to make a vote?
Because, because, you know, what you, what you told us during the, during the work session, when we had the meeting about the policy, you said that we don't need any, any type of meeting, and that the policy provides to make a change.
It did, but during that time that you had it, you did not have the emergency order from the governor, you did not have the FDOH rules.
So it's just trying not to have, not, not to challenge that order. We are trying to avoid that type of situation.
We are trying to, and I think we need some broad language. I think your intent of the policy was to make sure that the superintendent could be fluid and could make those decisions without having to go through the rulemaking process, which is cumbersome with advertising and everything. Yes.
So when you see, when you say that can be the cleanest way, but not the only way, is the cleanest way, but not the only way, because we can recommend the changes?
You can.
And, and challenge the rule. If that can be done in, by emotion or not? We don't need it? Just express our recommendation, and that's it?
You can express your recommendation to all of us right now, absolutely. And we can take those into consideration when we're drafting the red line of the policy, if that's, you want to bring the policy back for consideration.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So I just want to make then, so my recommendation is to have a mask mandate with a, that's my opinion, with a medical opt-out, as long as the positivity rate remain above 5% in the county. That's my recommendation. I don't know the rest of the school board members, but I want to be clear on my recommendation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Lopez. Member Cobert. I'm sorry, yeah, no, Member Cobert. Oh, boy. Okay. So, a few things. As far as the policy, I, I think, right now, where we are, the policy that we all approved is fine, because it provided for the safety net should circumstances change. And here's the thing. One of our speakers asked, "What has changed? Why would we reverse? What has changed? Does the situation has changed?" When we began, when we initiated this policy to mandate masks, but with the parent opt-out, we were at a very, very low transmission rate. We thought we were almost over. We were between 1 and 2%. And so it felt like the right thing to do. And I, and I said to parents at the time, "Consult with your own personal physician and make a decision as an individual family." But we put in that safety net in case things changed. And there are a lot of things that have changed. We have 400 new cases just yesterday. The difference between last year and this year, last year, when we were told to open our schools, we were able to put in distance learning through LaunchEd. We were able to mandate face coverings, and there were no complaints at that time, except for the students that needed for medical reasons. And we were like, "Great, that makes sense." And we were able to social distance because we had two or three different virtual, virtual options. We're not able to social distance that way because LaunchEd was taken away from us. And as far as face coverings, you know, we have some schools, I have some schools that are in 99-plus percent compliance, and then others that are not. And I'm watching to see which one of those schools are, are teachers getting sick, or our students getting sick. But when you ask, "Why reverse and what has changed?" There are a lot of factors that have changed, and it has changed continuously since March of last year. For 18 months, the situation has changed. People are sick and tired of hearing the word "fluid." But we have had to be fluid, and we have had to make changes. So what is the reason now for shoring up our mat, face covering requirement? What is the reason for tightening that up? Is to prevent the closure of our schools so that our students can continue to go to school. Across this country, districts are having to shut down schools and pivot to all virtual, and we don't want to do that. So I believe that we can give, we have given the superintendent the authority to make these decisions. We can make recommendations based on what we feel is right. And I don't think we need to have an emergency meeting to do that. I actually appreciate the surgical approach, where if my school is in 99% compliance, and I'm looking at one right now of one of my very big schools, 99% compliance, they have zero quarantines right now. They're doing really, really well. We might not need to put a, a universal mandate on that school. But another school, that I've got a lot of kids out, or teachers out, and we want to prevent them from closing, we need to look at that very carefully. We want to go further after that, that's fine. But I believe, under the policy that we have currently, we can do that. And I believe that taking that approach also meets the Commissioner of Education's requirements, that, those are his own words, that we should take a strategic and surgical approach. I think we would also not be in violation of the order along those lines. I have said from the table, "I believe we need to challenge this rule," because this rule not only strips the rights of local authorities to make decisions based on what's going on right here, right now, it also strips the rights of Orange County citizens to have decisions made here locally. So that's the reason I think we need to challenge the rule. But I do believe that the policy we have in place currently allows us to take more serious measures. It could be temporary, it could be for 30 days, it could be whatever the superintendent believes in consultation with this board. And I am willing to give her that authority to do what she thinks is right, based on data, based on schools, based on CDC guidelines, in consultation with the Department of Health. I believe our policy, I, I think we have a good policy the way it stands, and I believe that we, we have already given her that authority, and I think we can do that tonight. That's not in violation of any policy, that doesn't require an emergency meeting, that does not violate the trust of the public. It's what we said we were going to do.
Thank you, Member Cobert. Vice Chair.
Okay. So either I've been on the school board for nine years and we've been doing it wrong all along, or we always have the right to advise and direct our superintendent, period, the end. The policy, again, I understand why people got a little hinky about the word mandate. But the policy, that rule, does not override our ability to counsel and have discussion and support a direction of our superintendent, ever. Is that correct, Ms. Enval?
That is correct.
Okay. So does, is, I hope there's clarity around that now, because otherwise, for nine years, I've been doing it wrong. And again, I, I, I hope that everybody understands what, I, I think Linda really, Member Cobert, really articulated it well, what, what I was saying earlier about the surgical approach. That whatever that superintendent's recommendation is, basically the 5% that we would look at. I have schools with zero cases right now. I, I believe our policy is strong for those schools, and, and quite frankly, those schools also have very few kids that have chosen not to wear masks, but there's a few, and that's okay. When we see spikes, we don't want to have to go to a canvas approach. We don't have LaunchEd any longer. We want to be able to deliver education at the best of the ability to all of the 700, 800, 3,200 students in a particular school. So managing where the virus is in our community and spread is highly important. The more people that get vaccinated, the less we'll have to manage. This, thankfully, again, we don't have enough data right now on our current local level, but the data that I have heard from the medical professionals that I, that I work with during the day, looks like things are beginning to plateau, which is great news. It doesn't take us out of the woods. It doesn't stop kids and the most vulnerable from being more vulnerable. But the more we can be responsive to where the issues are, the more we will help to contain it and manage it. That is within our recommendation authority right now to the superintendent to come up with ideas that she can then implement and feed back to us, and hopefully build consensus. I don't see that rule standing in the way, and we just got confirmation of that from our general counsel.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Felder.
Thank you so much. I want to be clear. I am concerned, especially with those persons in my, in my district. I have not had a large percentage of students sending in letters to opt-out wearing masks. For the most part, the children in my district are wearing masks. However, I have to, I am, I'm the representative of District 5, but I sit on a school board for all the districts. So I just cannot be concerned with kids just in my district. I'm concerned about children all over this district, and parents. And I personally am in agreement with the surgical approach, because this is the thing. None of us on this board want what happened in March 2020, when we shut down. We don't want that. None of us want that. So we have to be able to put something in place so that if, if there is a serious breakout, where we have to shut down where we have to shut down schools, if, like, Member Gould said, if school X has a breakout, 20%, and then we say, "Okay, let's look at it for two weeks," and it moves up to 50%, okay, mandated mask. And then after even the mandated mask, and it keeps moving up, we don't have to shut down a school. We're going to have to because we have to keep people safe. The other thing is, I got a call, and as we all did, from our legal, Amy Invol. We talked last night at LYNTH. And I shared with her that I was understanding the surgical approach in terms of if there is a serious breakout, we, as a board, we have the right and jurisdiction to direct our superintendent to do what's best. Because we have to consider all the children. We have to consider everybody. Because some schools, some schools haven't had any kind of outbreak. They haven't had it. I mean, and they're doing well. But there are schools in our district, every week, every week, there is some kind of outbreak. And we were, you know, I don't want to just talk about sports, but, you know, we're the sports kingdom of the country in the state of Florida. We like football. And there have been schools have not been able to do what they need to do because of an outbreak. We ought to be very, very serious about this. So, chairperson and board, fellow board members, my suggestion is that we look at, continue to look at the surgical approach in terms of if something, an outbreak comes and it gets unmanageable, then we have to do what we can. Because we were voted and chosen by members of our constituency to be their votes because they trusted our decision. It is incumbent upon us to make the best decision. Then they must trust that we're going to make the best decision. So it's my hope that we can give the superintendent, give her direction, that if there is a serious outbreak at this particular school or this area, that she has, she does, she can, we can mandate. That is my suggestion. However, all the other schools may not need that because they're not having those kinds of problems. That is my opinion, and that is my stance. Thank you.
Member Gallow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trying to collect my thoughts. So, I do have some serious concerns about the misinformation, the confusion that is coming out of this board, and then what is being shared with the community. Because if I'm confused sitting at this dais, I can't even imagine what our community is feeling right now. So I'm concerned about the information that we're given. I'm extremely concerned that General Counsel is giving different information to different school board members. That has me serious concern because our General Counsel is a person we have to rely on the most. And we have to trust that the information that we're given is accurate. And we've had so many conversations at this dais regarding mandates and what we need to do. Remember, Dr. Kessler Dental has called for two different emergency meetings. So did Member Bird called for an emergency meeting. And not one time, not one time, did General Counsel said, "Yes, that's the way we must go. If you want to do anything different, then you've been doing it." And I still stand that we've been in violation of this policy. And why were we not told before now that we are violating a policy by instituting mandates? So I'm, it's, we're, we're giving our community whiplash, and we're getting whiplash up here at the dais. And that is not a good look. So I am upset. I'm extremely upset with our General Counsel right now and some of the advice that we've been given. But we'll have to, we'll deal with that later. So as far as the policy it goes, I understand, I understand the strategic approach. Osceola, by the way, just had to close A through 8 because they had too many cases today. It just happened today. I think that the reason that the mandate was in the original policy was the numbers were very low. The Delta variant had not hit Orange County or the state of Florida like it has. And we were trying to make sure that it would be difficult for us to institute a mask mandate. We were trying to respect the wishes of parents. We agree with parental choice. And we did it so, so that it would be a mandate. And it would not be arbitrarily by this board or any former board to come in and make that change without it, without a further discussion with our community and further input from the community. So I understand why that language was in there. And I did have issues with Part B of this policy as well. With that being said, we're not in the same place we were in June or in early July. Delta has come in and kicked our rear ends. Up and down, kids are getting sick. Teachers are getting sick. I have concerns about schools shutting down. I think Member Covert said it the best when she, when she talked about the loss of, loss of learning and bus drivers. And I mean, we just, we want our kids to be in school. That's where they belong. That's where they learn best. That's where they thrive. That's where we want them to be. But we have to be cautious about it. So I find, and I do have data. I know several people said, "Please give me the data." I have JAMA. I have, there was a big study in Georgia that happened about masks. It's 39% more effective that, or 37%. That coupled with ventilation, it even goes up higher. So there is some real data that says masks do have some protection. Is it the be-all, end-all? No. Do, "I like wearing masks"? No. Do, "I want to mask our kids"? No, I don't. I don't want to mask our teachers. I don't want to, I don't want to mask anybody. But we have to keep everybody safe. So I like the surgical approach. My only issue with the surgical approach, I like it because it's not widespread and it's tactical. What I don't like about it is, is I have serious concerns about the Department of Health right now being able to keep up with the load of quarantines. Our quarantines are still lower than our positivity rates. It's just a lot of work. And I know they haven't had time to hire people yet. I'm not blaming Dr. Pino. I'm just saying, we're not where we need to be. I have concerns about our dashboard taking a little too long and quarantines happening too long. So I just, I don't think we're where we are or have the data available to us to apply that surgical approach. I am in favor of it. But I would be more in favor of a mask mandate for maybe two weeks to 30, not long. I don't want to mask these kids and then get the numbers down. And then we can go to that more surgical approach to kind of control the spread. And again, you know, I will advocate for getting masks off kids as quickly as possible because I, it's not comfortable. But I, I need, I need everybody to be safe, and I don't know what else to do. And every pediatrician I've spoken to, every doctor that's written to me, every head of a hospital, the ADA, the CDC, everybody is saying, they're begging us. They're begging us to please do universal masking just until we get these numbers down so that we can get through this and we can have a normal school year. I want all of our children to have a normal school year. I don't want to postpone homecoming. I don't want to have to cancel events or football games or all these things that are so important to our children. Ban any of it. I want them to have a normal year. And the only way we can get there is if we get these numbers down and then kind of do that surgical approach that Member Gould and Member Covert mentioned. So that's just kind of where I'm at. I just, the dashboard just has me slightly concerned. And I don't think it's anybody's fault. There's just a lot coming in. It's like we opened up the floodgates and the water's just rushing through. We're getting a fire hose in the mouth. And we're doing the best that we can. But until we can tap down the fire hose and get it under control, we've, we've got some hard decisions on what, on what we need to do. As far as a lawsuit, I wanted to know, John, sorry. I wanted to know about the timeframe. Like, what kind of timeline? If we challenge the rules, like, what kind of timeline are we looking at? Like, what is the process? Will it go, will it eventually get kicked to the first DCA? And I guess this is different than the lawsuit filed last year. But my concern is, and are we challenging it? Because we're really, is the challenge really like, "You took away our local control and you took away the constituents to have their voice in our community by taking away our local control and doing a wild branding rule"? Like, would that be kind of, is that why we're challenging the rule? Because if we're challenging the rule so that we have the ability to, so that we can get, what's the word I'm looking for? Not, so we can get a stay. That's not the word I'm looking for.
Injunction.
Injunction, thank you. So that we can get an injunction and then, and be able to make the best decisions for our community. That's one thing. But if it's not, it's like, it, it, here's my concern. I am praying that we get a handle on COVID and that we get it handled in our community. We're on the downside. We give our community some normalcy. And a year from now, when I'm praying to God that we don't have this issue, that we're fighting a lawsuit that may not be applicable or important because we've all moved on. And we're still spending money on it. So that's, those are really my two questions, I guess. Thank you.
All right. So it's not necessarily an issue of local control, meaning under the Constitution. What the courts are very clear on is that the Division of Administrative Hearings cannot render a decision on constitutional grounds. So we would never say, "By the way, this violates our authority under Article 9, Section 4." They will say, "That's not something we could decide." Right? And then if we were to appeal whatever the rule, let's say the rule determination was adverse to us. If we would appeal that and then say, "Hey, we're trying to preserve the constitutional question," and the courts would come back with us. But the School Board of Collier County case says, "You guys don't have the constitutional standing to do it." This is, the purpose of this rule is to stop, the rule challenge would be to say, to stop the enforcement of the rule. Right? That's what it is. Ultimately, it is, we are trying, this rule, whether it was adopted by the wrong procedure, whether the agency didn't have rulemaking authority, whatever that basis is, we're trying to stop enforcement of the rule and get a decision that says the rule is unenforceable. So how long does that take? Through the normal rulemaking process, they, you know, once you send it up there, they get 10 days after we send the petition up, they have to set it for hearing. Hearing has to be done within 30 days. And then after that, the ALJ renders a decision. So you're looking probably a two-or-so-month process, at least, before you get it all the way through. We could try to see if there's a way to expedite it. I don't know. I would hope that they would expedite something like this. But that's something that we would have to have the Division of Administrative Hearings actually say, "Yes, this is a case that should be expedited." So that's all considerations that we would have in filing it. But it's not to, it's not to vindicate your local control. It's to just get the rule not to be enforced. That's the whole purpose.
Okay. Well, based on that timeline, I would support a rule challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallow. Okay. I am hoping, oh, gosh. You okay? Let me, let me give my thoughts on what I think we should do. And then I'm going to perhaps articulate where I think things maybe went wrong. First of all, I've said it and said it. I think we need to challenge the rule. Period. End of subject. I want legal counsel to figure out the best avenue. If that's joining forces, bad term. Signing on with Broward or whoever you all decide is the best avenue, I agree that that would make more sense than starting now and behind the eight ball. I believe that, well, let me back up. When we adopted this rule, you all may or may not remember, but I couldn't have been more clear at the end, right before my vote, that I would not have voted for this or not for Provision B. And I asked repeated questions of our General Counsel and the superintendent because I wanted it on record that she would have this authority. And that it wasn't, did not require a mandate as in a formal mandate. I put that into the record over and over and over again. And I even talked about how I would be back here in a heartbeat if I ever believed our children were at risk because of that decision. And I'm back here. And I'm advocating that we give the superintendent direction today based on all the representations that we had when we adopted this rule. I, and we simultaneously join a lawsuit so that it is clear[1463.34] I, and we simultaneously join a lawsuit so that it is clear that it is not our goal to ignore the law. It is our goal to challenge it. And that's what we as Americans do. And this is the part, oh, and in terms of what direction? I will tell you personally, I, Member Gallo made some excellent comments. Everybody's made excellent comments. My preference, I will, if the board is only comfortable with the surgical approach, I certainly want to see that. I think we need to put a full-on mandate in place right now. And some of the reason for that is when I look at the schools that have problems, I'm hearing from parents in other schools that have students that are vulnerable, have students at home, that they, they can't send them in, and now they're not sending their other children in because, and there's no launch ed, and they have no option, and saying, oh, I'm sorry, but your positivity rates aren't high enough yet. It doesn't sit well to me. It doesn't strike me as equity. So for that reason, I want a mask mandate in place for all of our schools. That's, that would be my direction. Again, if the majority of us are not in that, on that page, don't read this as, I won't support a half a loaf. I will, but I think a full mandate is in order right now. I think, Member Gallo, it is not in violation of law if we're challenging the law. I do not believe that law was properly enacted and we're going to challenge that law. And one could argue everything's in violation of law, and that's why we go to court, and that's why we go through this process. So that's, that would be my number one choice. My number two choice is the surgical approach. And now, and I, in defense of Ms. Enval, she was not here on Thursday when we had our meeting. And I'm trying to figure out where the disconnect is. She did not sit through this meeting. And it occurs to me that maybe when she called me and said, we need to have, we need, the safest thing to do, I think, is what she was saying, was to change the rule, the policy. That perhaps the reason she didn't contact you all is that she did not understand that we all were coming here expecting to give direction today. I'm thinking that's probably what happened because Ms. Enval and Dr. Jenkins communicate very well with this board. And so when I arrived, well, when I started talking and I saw the looks on your face, I realized what a huge disconnect. And for the benefit of the public, it is very hard. We do not get to call each other. When I get an email from Member Castor Dental, I can't even respond to it because they were having a conversation. So, and, and Member Castor. No, I can't really respond. I can't have a conversation. And, and we could debate that, and we could end up in court debating it, but I've been through that once, and I don't really want to go through that again. I'd rather just be squeaky clean and not have conversations via email. It's perfectly fine for you to send the email. But Member Castor Dental has been advocating from the get-go for this. I don't want to take away all the, the hard work that everybody has put into this and the passion that everybody brings to the table. I think we can go forward today. I think if we want to, if we want to be extra careful, we could go the extra step, and we could call an emergency meeting. I actually, today, just to build, just to establish my own credibility on this, I sent Ms. Enval my thoughts for a red line version of the policy. Because if we were going to do that, I didn't want any further delays than absolutely necessary. So I gave her kind of a clean sweep idea that I thought was something the board could, could support. If the board does not want to have an emergency meeting, we're not having an emergency meeting. There's no point in me trying to call a meeting that you all don't want to be at. And I think we have, personally, we've put into the record the basis for us adopting this rule. And I think that we can stand by that. I do want to put out the option that perhaps the safest thing is to have a meeting to change the policy, to take away any ambiguity that could be in there. So that's my, that's my direction, my two cents on where we are. Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad the mask is on because it hides my facial expressions during this meeting, which have gone all over the place. So this is, my blood pressure is up. Our motions are high. But I was, I thought about the, our approach to our potential district or, or mask mandate that may have come up tonight. So I sat down and I thought about the surgical approach. And to me, that word surgical is really just a way to placate the governor because that's a word he uses. I don't think that that's appropriate to use, that, that approach. It's more like whack-a-mole. The, because it's, it relies on being reactive to spread that's already there. And, and it's, it's relying on an arbitrary number of students that test and report that they're positive instead of preventing the spikes, which are difficult to do anyway because COVID is all throughout our community, and it's at every school. Even if we don't see any numbers, it's there. The whack-a-mole approach, where you just put in, you know, a mask mandate for a certain school with a certain number is, it's subject to frequently changing messages for the people who are at that school. Well, today you have to wear your mask mandate, but maybe you won't have to next week. Maybe we won't have it. And that's going to be very difficult to manage that messaging. We can't message among the board members right here. How are we going to message that? And the, the district-wide mask mandate is simple. One message for everybody, and it's preventive. The, the whack-a-mole mask mandate allows or relies on accurate and timely reporting, which we don't have. Nobody's fault other than there is a massive surge of cases, and the Department of Health cannot keep up. And that's not a secret, and I'm not putting them down. They're working very hard, and we're supplementing with our own employees. We can't keep up. So I don't think that basing a decision that's that important on numbers that we can't guarantee is the right approach. It would require additional staff to keep monitoring and documenting and, and communicating, and we don't have additional staff. There are just too many steps involved in this kind of approach. I don't know how we're going to be monitoring. This one has 20% now. Wait, it might be going down. Wait. Oops, sorry, it went up tomorrow. It's, it's going to be more chaotic than, than what we have right now. And it does nothing, as someone else mentioned, that to provide a regular environment for our unvaccinated students and our most vulnerable students and their families. It does nothing for them. The universal mask mandate creates a safer environment for every student, no matter what school, regardless of whether your, your school has an outbreak or not. Actually, our, our hospitals are relying on us to do the right thing. There's no more room. We can't afford a spike here and there. When there's a spike at a school, every one of those students who has to stay home for however long, whether they're, they have the case or they've been exposed, that is a family that is now stuck at home for weeks. They're not going to work. They're not in school. They may be going to the hospital. It's just not a responsible policy. When we have the option, when we're deciding now to go ahead and, and free ourselves of restrictions, it's, I don't understand why we wouldn't just go all the way and do what is the safest for the most people. 200,000 students, 24,000 employees. It's simpler. It, it's easy to communicate, and we can implement it tomorrow. If they don't have a mask, we have extras. They know how to wear a mask. And I, I bet a lot of people still have their masks at home somewhere tucked away. If I, if I could just impress upon the board to consider these two options, the district-wide medical exemption only and the limited whack-a-mole, I, I just would hope that you would land on the, the district-wide mandate for now until, like, Member Lopez has mentioned, the district schools or our community is under a 5% positivity rate. I think that's an easy measure. It's not impossible to achieve. And it allows, allows everyone to work together with a collective action because that is what we need. And before we leave tonight, I hope that Superintendent Jenkins doesn't simply say, I heard your direction. I want to know what you heard. I want to know what is that direction because I've left so many board meetings thinking I knew where we were going. And I haven't. So that would be very helpful, I think, to all of us if we could all hear that at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, first of all, yes, I agree with challenging the rule. I think that that is absolutely appropriate. Look, it's, it's already been said, we have an obligation to provide the children in this community an education and a safe school. We can't provide that education to them if they get quarantined or they get sick, which is what's happening. I have, I had a kindergarten class yesterday now that has to pivot. So these class of kindergarteners, the entire class is not going to be getting an education. And this is their first experience in school. So that's just infuriating. I have another school that has 116 quarantined yesterday, just one day. So all those kids now are not getting an education that we're supposed to be providing. So this is our responsibility. And masks do help. And I, like Member Gallo, have data to show. There's been plenty of studies. We're just now seeing studies from this past school year when schools were home. That's why there wasn't a lot of data. But now we're starting to see. There was a study out of Georgia, as she mentioned, that showed schools that had mask mandates were 37% lower in instances of COVID. There was another study done by the ABC Science Collective that showed that, actually, I'm going to read a little statement of this because I thought it was really important for us to hear. Masking is an adequate, masking is adequate to prevent within-school COVID-19 transmission with no difference between schools requiring greater than three feet of distance between students compared to those requiring less than three feet. Distance did not prevent infection. This is what this study is showing, that masking was what was the important step, not the social distancing, which I found really interesting because that's our, a big issue for us this year with 100% of our students back in schools that we can't distance. We have to have them masked right now. Otherwise, we're just going to keep seeing all these COVID cases jumping. I have gotten six phone calls in my phone tonight from my daughter's two schools. Six. I'm imagining that's because a principal probably got a call because there were COVID cases, and then they got another call, so then they had to call, send another message out. So that'll be fun listening to all those tonight. So, you know, I, I mean, this is not going to go away if we don't do the masking. I, I agree with Member Lopez that we should do, Member Lopez in Castor Dental, that we should do a universal masking right now. I think a surgical approach is just being too reactive. I also agree completely that we can't rely on the dashboard numbers right now because they are behind. And the other thing that those rely on too is reporting. And now with the availability of at-home COVID tests, a lot of people are doing at-home COVID tests, testing positive, and then it's not being reported to the DOH. Therefore, it doesn't even get on our COVID board. So I don't think we can surgically protect our kids if we don't even know the true numbers of who's sick or not. So I, I'm hesitant to, I'll, I'll support whatever we can do. But my choice would be definitely universal masking for that reason. And then I just wanted to also highlight, you know, everyone heard Dr. Pino yesterday say that ages five to 14 are now the highest group of positivity. And he, as it has been mentioned, recommended that we do put masks on our kids in schools to help prevent. So I am, I am in full support. And, you know, I just, I understand. I, I feel the same way as Member Gallo. I don't want to see these babies with masks on their face. It doesn't make me happy. I am an advocate for children. I have been in education my entire adult life. It doesn't make me happy. It doesn't make me happy to see my own children go to school every day with a mask on their face. But they do it, and they're in high school. So I kind of, this year, said, okay, the masks are optional. How do you feel? And both my girls were like, oh, no, I'm wearing a mask. Like, what are you crazy? I'm not going to wear a mask. So, so they go to school every day with their mask, and it doesn't bother them. But inside, it does make my heart hurt a little bit that this is how they're experiencing school. My senior daughter has not had a school dance since, they have not had school dances to, since the fall of their freshman year, I mean, their sophomore year. All of our seniors this year have not had a school dance since the fall of their sophomore year. That's, that's heartbreaking. And so I don't want to see any of this either. I want it back to normal too, just like everyone else. But it's not going to get back to normal until we all start taking the measures that we need to take to get this virus, which yes, is probably going to be here forever, but get it down where it's manageable and where our hospitals aren't, aren't flooded and our ICUs are not overflowing, where people can't even get procedures they really need to be healthy right now because there's too many COVID patients in the hospital. I mean, that's just, it's, it's just not good. So, you know, all the other issues that masks may create, you know, the, if parents, you hear parents talk about the anxiety or the, I've heard people say speech delays or emotional stress or tiredness or headaches. All of those things can be treated. But death from COVID cannot be treated. And even though these kids may not be dying right now, knock on wood, they are vectors. They're going home. They have families. They have families, just as Castor Dental said, Member Castor Dental said, they have families. They are out in the communities. Spread happens out in the communities too. So we can't just, we can't just pretend like it's not happening. And so I just, I, I hope that that is clear enough direction that I want a mask mandate, please.
I think that was very clear. Thank you, Member Bird. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So now that we agree that we can make a decision tonight, I just want to make sure that, and, and let the superintendent know that I believe in her leadership. She is very assertive, and she always listens to us. She has conversations with us, you know, weekly basis. So she is the, the expert on the operational part. So I know that while we are talking, she's, you know, making conclusions in how it's going to be affected in operational base in our recommendations. And I highly appreciate that she provides feedback about the options that we are discussing tonight. And also, now that we have federal support, that I don't know in details what type of support we're going to have from the federal, at the federal level. I don't know if Ms. Enval or Mr. Palmarini can provide more feedback on, on that. Because if we have consequences based on, on challenging the, the rule, so what type of support are we going to have from the, you know, from the, from the president or from the Secretary of Education Cardona?
Madam Chair, actually, Mr. Palmarini is looking at me for a good reason because I did actually speak with Secretary. He called on Thursday late afternoon. Two things I think we can depend on. Number one, he called just to see how I was doing to be encouraging, and certainly wanted to encourage that we continue to try to do what is best for children. Offered both technical support. That's why Mr. Palmarini was looking at his blog, looking at some of his strategies. And then offered or reminded me that there are financial supports available as well. President Biden actually some time ago said, if the governor or State Board of Education tried to have financial penalties put in place on boards, that they would in turn authorize the use of ESR funds if, if needed to make up for those dollars. And so from a federal level, I was very encouraged by Secretary Cardona's comments.
And also, I, I do not believe in the surgical approach. Thank you, you know, for bringing it up. But the reason that I don't believe in the surgical approach is because I think that we will have to, you know, we will have our ESC students, our most vulnerable students and staff, staying at home because they're not going to be safe. They have to stay there because the surgical is the same thing that we have in another school. So I think that we have to take in consideration the most vulnerable kids and the ESC students. They need us. At that moment, I know that we have a lot of students that stay at home for more than one year because they cannot go to school and they cannot learn from the computer. So I think that they also deserve to be at school in a, in a, in a, in a more safe environment with all, all of the students and staff wearing a mask. I do not to sacrifice any student well-being and safety and neither academically. If we make a decision tonight, that I hope we're going to do that, I have a lot of hope on that. I see all my school board fellows, you know, talking about the same thing, the same issue, the same concerns. Can we also have the emergency meeting to change the policy? Because I think that now that we're having this conversation, the policy is not that perfect. And we have to make sure that if, you know, the, the situation of COVID getting worse, we have the tools to make, you know, more fast decisions. That's a question for Ms. Enval.
Ms. Enval?
So if you, we can do the rulemaking procedure. We can clean up that language if we need to or clarify it. I think adding a sentence that specifically says that the school board will provide direction for the superintendent. And it could be more restrictive. It also could be less restrictive, you know, depending on what's going on. And that would capture both the surgical approach and the, the multi across the board, if that's what you so decide. With an emergency policy, we could do that on Friday. It is only valid for 90 days. So we would have to then go through the regular rulemaking process alternatively. And if you want that, as the chair said, like a safety blanket, if, you know, just to clarify that, we can go through the regular rulemaking process. You can still act as you are according to that particular process. You made it clear on the record that you were going to confer with her and provide her with direction, and she has acted in accordance with that direction. You always in your policy are allowed to provide, I mean, you have always provided her direction. So we could just start with the regular rulemaking process so we could get that done in about 30 days. If you want to just change policy EBBA to put that clarification in, instead of just going through the emergency process, continue as you're going, and then we'll do that. But like I said, it'll take about 28, 38, depending on our advertising guidelines.
Yes, I would like to recommend that. I hope the, as all the school board members can provide more feedback on that matter as well.
And if, I would ask if you want to do that, if you would like to provide me with your suggested changes, that would be great. I have compiled some suggestions that I have. And I, but I can put them all together. You just have to email them to me individually because this is, this is so hard because you guys can't have these discussions. You cannot violate the sunshine. So you have to have these out here on the dais, and they have to have, they have to be those challenging conversations. And I apologize for not understanding what your direction was on Thursday. I mean, I kind of watched the meeting, but we're doing something else as well. So anyway, I think if that is the case, if the board does want to change that policy, I just need some input from you all, and we can get it advertised as soon as we can and go through the regular, I would recommend that we do the regular rulemaking process. You can still go ahead, you know, with your direction to the superintendent, and that way your policy will support that.
Perfect. Thank you.
So clarification, the idea of So clarification, the idea of, um, a regular process would give more time to General Counsel to make sure that the language is exactly the way we want it. Because the challenge, the last time in arguing whether there was ambiguity, once it's advertised, that's what you're voting on or you start over again. So, um, that is an option.
And we would have to go through the regular rulemaking process, just like you said. We'd have to have a ruled event workshop and a, and a school board meeting where we receive public input on those revisions. But this way it would save, you know, you, you can accomplish the same thing via emergency, but you'd have to do it again anyway to make sure it would be in the, go through the regular rulemaking, chapter 120 process. So it's in your permanent policy.
All right. Thank you, Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Colbert?
All right, just a couple of things. One, as far as, uh, our staff and mandating that our staffs, staff is required to wear face coverings, that's not in violation of any of our policies because the superintendent does have the authority to provide operational, um, direction to our staff. So I just wanted to, uh, circle back to your concern, Member Gallo. And I believe that superintendent does have that authority. So there's no violation of policy there. That's number one. Number two, we've had some discussion of motivation. And you all, I'm sure would agree. There is no other motivation for me as a school board member except to keep our children and our employees safe. This has nothing to do with my salary. This has nothing to do with my position. I have said, I told Mr. McCracken, I would happily step aside from my seat if I thought that would change anything, but that's not going to change anything. The only motivation is keeping these children safe. And I know my community, and I know that this decision is going to disappoint a lot of people in my personal community. And that's why I need you to know that you, you put me here to do the best by our children. We may not agree on this decision, but I need to make the decisions that I think are in the best interest of our children and of our employees. So I need to make that very, very clear. Another thing that has changed that, that gives me great concern is that we have parents who are COVID positive, who are sending their children to school. That's alarming to me. We have employees whose spouses home with COVID who are coming to school. And that creates a, a more uncertain environment. And with whoever made the point of the home tests, that's how some of those are not getting reported. And how, and that's how the family is not quarantining. And so that's another reason for us to err on the side of caution. And I hope those, and, and those of you who have written and said, but my daughter has asthma or the mask causes this skin rash or irritation with my child, consult with your physician, talk to your doctor. That, that could be a medical exemption and I, I am okay with that because the numbers are going to be small and that's valid. So it goes back to what I did originally say that I stand by in May and early June, consult with your own personal physician in making this decision for your family. But we do as a community need to do everything that we can. So, um, whether we go tactical surgical approach, and I understand the concerns with that, or a more restrictive policy, we do have to go down that path and I will support the board. And finally, I would like to see Council Enval's recommendations on revision to the policy.
Thank you, Member, Member Colbert. And Member Colbert, when you said about questions and motivations, you were talking about the public, I think.
I was talking about personal motivations because there's been conversations about why we have or haven't made certain decisions. And I wanted to make clear that there's, there's no personal motivation for having gone down this path of, of taking a lot of time to think this through. It's never been about worry for me, my position, my salary. It's only been about what's best for children. How do we do this? How do we possibly do this? You know, whether it's without violating the law or finding a way, a creative way to make this happen. I think that's what we've been trying to do. But I think we've landed in a place where we don't feel like, uh, we have any other option.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
I have never had any doubt about the motivation of the board members. I thought you were referring to, some of our constituents have questioned that. I just wanted on the record that I, when we occasionally disagree, I have no doubt about the motivations of every member on this board. And that's very comforting to, um, serve on a board like this. Member Felder?
Thank you so much. My prayer is that, um, we will get godly guidance as we, uh, deliberate on this very serious, serious matter. And I can't stress it enough because as you can see, all of us have very serious concerns about the decisions that we're going to have to make that's going to impact over 200,000 children, over 24,000 employees. One of the things that I neglected to talk about, and I just need to say this, I do have concerns about teachers, uh, because it's difficult for us to do social distancing in classes. And when you have, uh, a teacher that has 171 students per day, and even though they're trying to level off, but you can level off, but if there are not enough teachers to come in to take on those classes to level off, you still got students, 30, some teachers maybe 40, some in a class. And the, the continual bantering back and forth about keeping your mask on and not being able to seriously monitor in the hallway, whether or not is thi- does this kid have an opt-out letter to not wear a mask? Or does this kid, uh, you know, you just can't do, it's difficult. I, I'm suggesting, and I know we got a lot of things we dealing with, but I, I'm, I'm coming from a teacher's perspective. If we could, uh, include a seven hours, seventh period, so that those classes that are crowded, that there can be some leeway because we cannot. Not kindergarten, you might be able to do it. Some elementary schools, you might be able to put the children, you know, separate them. But in an American literature class, when you got 30 kids or, uh, a biology class, you got 35 kids, is very difficult. So I'm hoping that as we are deliberating and deciding, again, uh, fellow board members about how we're going to handle the mask mandate or not mask mandate, that we also consider the teachers, uh, that are teaching and the amount of students and how we can work this thing out. Because again, I personally feel that the launch ad approach was what we had to do, but so many of our students suffered. They suffered, they did not learn. They did not learn. I don't ever want to go back to that. However, I want people safe. I want teachers safe. I want students safe. So, um, again, as we began to talk and discuss some options, uh, please don't, we, please leave the teachers out in terms of how they're handling, the, the, the children in class. And the last thing I want to say, I am concerned about the homecoming and the proms because a lot of students didn't have that. One of my suggestions was the football field, you know, because it's open air, it's not closed in air. So that they can, you know, they can all be able to go to the, to the, uh, um, homecoming dance and you, you, you get a number that's going to be, uh, a proper, where they can do a proper social distancing and once that number is there, click, click, click. Okay, that's it. You can't come in because I don't want them to not have their homecoming, uh, dances and so forth. Because it appears as we're looking at the data, the numbers are going up. I don't care what we say, it's, they're going up, people are getting sick. They're getting sick and they're dying. That's the truth of the matter. So those are the things that I want us to consider, um, board members, as we perhaps come back together again, to talk about the, the, the wording of the policy, uh, uh, attorney Enval. And also, I still want to have that option for parents, you know, in terms of the, the mask. But I do understand the seriousness of not being masked. You know, what is that doing to our ESC children? And some teachers have compromising conditions that they can't, they can't be unmasked. So anyway, I wanted to say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member, uh, Vice Chair Gould?
Um, a, a question for, um, Mr. Palmarini. Mr. Palmarini, if we, um, which I think everybody is in favor of, file suit, while that suit is going on, does that allow us with protection to, um, implement a broad mask policy and be protected against breaking the law?
The, the general rule is, is that the rule is effective until it has been ruled, until it's been ruled in violation of rulemaking procedures. So the rule would still be considered in place and valid until such time as the Division of Administrative Hearings rules that the rule is invalid. So how that, I guess, would work is to the extent this board does require masks for everybody, you could potentially see the same letter that, um, Broward, Alachua has gotten. And they could potentially go down that road and it could potentially be subject to the same penalties. They have not, and we've looked, we haven't seen the Hillsborough, Miami Dade or, uh, Palm Beach. I don't, we haven't seen those letters go out to them yet. So, but I can't sit here and tell you that until, unless and until the rule is overruled, it's still considered valid. And the state could take the same actions they took against Broward and Alachua.
Okay. Thank you. That, that answered that question. I just wanted clarity on that because I, I am for, as I said earlier, I also believe that that rule was erroneous and, and did, um, violate a, a lot of things, including our local trusted authority with our constituents and our community. So, but we would be in violation of the law if we do a, or that rule, if we do a broad brushed mask policy until it is found that that rule was illegal. So I wanted to, to confirm that. Superintendent, um, one, I'd like to hear your thoughts before we continue this, this conversation on what you would, uh, think we could do and you would be comfortable in your role as, um, under the statutes in enforcing. And what do you think would be effective? Because I am not sure how we would, if, uh, it, and I think this is true when I'm talking to school board members from other communities who have enforced this, how we would enforce it when parents know there is a rule by the governor to opt out. Are we going to remove those children? We don't, are we going to make our principals patrol that? We can't separate the students, it's my understanding. So that is one thing. Masks, and I believe in mask efficacy because there's almost 100 years of data on mask efficacy for surgical and medical masks that is well documented. You know, when you get into gaiters, when you get into single cloth masks, they're, they're not as efficacy. They do not, however, completely prevent disease. So if I personally have a high-risk child, even if it's mask to mask, I'm likely not to send my child to school until this pandemic passes. So, you know, I think the majority of our community, and I'm going to come back to you in a second, Superintendent, I think the majority of our community, except for seven to seven and a half percent, have also wanted to put that safety belt on the face, um, of their kids because they want to minimize their masks. So we, well, the cases are going up. I'm looking at my school's datas. I'm not, I, I glance at the other districts, but I'm looking at the, the ones in, in my districts. Every school has had a case, but some of them are passed. Yes, we don't have the most timely numbers, but that is increasing. And, and I still don't see it being a 10% variance in actual cases to non-cases, just anecdotally. I don't have the data to back that up because we don't, we don't have what we don't have. But it's not a whack-a-mole approach that I want to have. I want to base decisions on data. We need to improve the data gathering. We need to do everything possible to partner to improve the data gathering. We may even need to do testing ourselves and put that requirement in. And we have the money to do that through the CARES Act. So maybe if we, um, suspect that somebody is carrying COVID or know that they've been in there, that we, we provide that test. But, um, again, back to my original question to the superintendent, what are you thinking and what do you think would be realistically enforceable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Ghul and members of the board, I'd actually had pressed, um, my button because I think I may be able to help bring us in for a landing. There, there are a couple of unique things about my role. Number one, um, I am not elected by the community. I'm appointed by a board, which means I have eight bosses. I've said that on more than one occasion. I am extremely impressed with the dedication of this board during a very difficult time. This community, this country has not lived through a pandemic in 100 years. So I want to thank this board for your steadfastness in pursuing what is best for our 200,000 children and 24,000 employees. Also want to thank members of the public that have given their input and their feedback as well. Tough times to govern and you have stepped up to the plate to this board. So let me mention a few things because I certainly don't want Member Castor Dental to leave not understanding what was decided. I'm, I'm going to offer a tutorial if she's left several meetings not knowing what was decided. I was surprised to hear that. Let me, let me tell you how I think we can bring this in for a landing. And, and this notion of consensus is a general agreement that the board members can live with. I understand everybody's not going to be 100% happy. They don't get their particular ideas. But the joy of having eight bosses is trying to build consensus and some compromise with something that we can all live with. Just as I understand, members of the public may not be extremely, uh, happy with outcomes as well. But always open to that feedback. Number one, I think, um, I, I, I want to, I want to address it this way. Number one, I think we have a clear majority of the board in favor of uni- universal mask mandate. Of the three board members who were more in favor of the surgical, I think I heard two of them, perhaps three. I'll ask you to confirm, indicate that you could also live with the universal mask mandate. I would love to have that general consensus before we're gone, before we're done here tonight. Number two, I only heard two people talk about a 5% mark. Let me tell you why I'm nervous about that. Because that's whiplash again. You go to 5%, next week you're up to 6%. Following week you're down again, next week you're up to 7%. I really am concerned about trying to set that, uh, line in the sand. However, I do think numbers at 19% means you're probably not going to get over it in 30 days. And so I lean towards saying a universal mask for the next 60 days through October 30th. Because you're at 19%. Again, I don't like the 5% mark in the sand because as soon as you go to six, seven, then you got to go mask off, mask on. It's back to whack-a-mole, as Member Castor Dental so colorfully put it. So five, yeah, so 5% is, I, I don't believe is, uh, the best, um, strategy. I'd like to say October 30th. And then, um, thirdly, for an implementation date, I think you have to give folks some time to get their doctor's note. And so I would say implementation, uh, on Monday as opposed to tomorrow. And then, um, I, I want to make sure we understand we have a And then I, I wanna make sure we understand we have a code of conduct that contemplates face masks because we inserted that previously. And we even had procedures in place for offenses or being out of compliance with that. We just didn't have to use it last year. It was not a controversial issue last year, but we certainly can share that we already have procedures in place with our code of conduct. But I would say we certainly wanna be compassionate and counsel with and talk with individuals and try to have very calm and peaceful resolutions to any of those concerns. But there is a code of conduct in place that can be used should we need to make use of it. That being said, and I, I certainly believe there is no need for a rush. The 30-day process for amending that policy seems reasonable to me as well. So I would ask just for confirmation if you can live with, if we can build consensus of Member Cobert, Member Gould, and Member Felder, that you can live with that 30-day universal ma, I'm sorry, 60-day universal mask mandate. And then other members of the board, if you can live with those parameters. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. The members, we wanna hear from Member Cobert, Member, Vice Chair Gould and Felder. Let's start with Member Cobert.
Yes, because I think that that still provides for flexibility in the future should we need to make a change, should we have a drastic drop, we can still, again, be flexible. So I, I am good with that, Superintendent. And I just wanna add that I appreciate your wisdom and eloquence. That is why you are the superintendent that we value so much. Yep.
Vice Chair.
Why 60 days over 30 days?
That's a compromise between this notion of 5%. You're at 19% now. I just don't see you dropping significantly in just one month. Certainly, we have a board meeting before that. If we see just this tremendous drop-off of cases, I will be delighted. It will be an answer to my prayers. We can certainly amend it if we need to. I wanna give a space because from 19% to get down to a comfort level is just quite a stretch. And so we can certainly change that. I know people don't wanna hear it, but we have to remain fluid. There could be a miraculous drop-off in cases in our community. That's what I pray to God for every day.
Me too. So I, I, I would be in favor of that with, with the comments that you just said and what Member Cobert said. And then I would like us to revisit that more targeted approach because we're, we're in this for the long haul. And, and, and I think we're gonna have components of the community that have higher percentages than other components of the community that may drag the overall county numbers down, but they're not really countywide. So, you know, I, I, I don't wanna just say it's, that's gonna be our knee-jerk reaction forever, but during this crisis, I, I am in support of that.
Thank you, Member Gould, Member Felder.
Thank you so much. Yes, Superintendent Jenkins, we thank you so much for your eloquence and how you are addressing this wonderful board. Yes. However, I, I am, I can live with the 60%, but I, I have an addendum. 60 days, I'm sorry, 60 days is that it has to be closely monitored. And I, I know that's a lot, but it, it, there can be no lackadaisical anything. The schools have to be clean like we have promised. And I know that we are working through a lot, juggling a lot of things. It's a lot to run a district. I'm learning that now with this enormous district here in Orange County. But I think it has to be closely monitored because we can't just, I don't want us to just pass out, okay, we're gonna do that, then everything just, business as usual. It will never be business as usual in Orange County ever again. So I am very much in favor with the 60 days because here again, it does give us leeway. And if the numbers go down, hallelujah, everybody take the mask off. But for right now, we've got the closely monitored. So thank you for giving us that, that leeway, Superintendent. Thank you so much.
All right. Anything else, Dr. Jenkins, or I'll go to Member Gallo? All right, Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I just wanna make a couple of statements and then I do have a question. I, I agree with Member Gould about the 60 days. I would prefer it to be sooner and I am praying that the numbers come down so that we can, we can reduce that timeframe. There is an article from USF that says we're plateauing and we're gonna, and, and we should hit the peak and be on the downside and then reach immunity. It was a very, it was a very positive article that we could be on this downside and hopefully we will be able to go back to optional soon. So that is my, my prayers because I would love, I would love to, I, I know that we need to do what we need to do. I know that we need the universal masking. We don't have to like it. I understand that we need to do it, but as soon as the numbers come down and we can go back to optional and then keep going down from there, that would be my, that would be what I would prefer.
Fine.
Because none of us want, none of us wanted to, to defy the order. None of us thought that we would be here. None of us predicted the delta. But, you know, I, everybody that I've listened to and trusted my entire life, doctors and scientists are telling us this is what we need to do. And I'm sad that we have to do it, but we have to put the safety of our children first. I do want to just, and I'm not, I promise I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but I think those who do not want their child masked, and I, and I understand.
Say that again, Member Gallo.
Sir, I said, I said I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but for those who are not gonna be happy with, with the 60 days policy on masking is probably gonna challenge our rule since it was said by General Counsel that we should not be doing this. So I, I, I do think we probably need an emergency meeting. I mean, I, I want to, we got, we're gonna do this on Monday, but I do think we need an emergency meeting because I don't know, and maybe General Counsel can answer this question, if we're now liable for lawsuits because we're going against our own rule, what is that? Because it's on record that the General Counsel told us that what we just did tonight is not in her recommendation and may, and may be against our policy. So I just wanna make sure that we're, we're procedurally in a good place and that we're not opening ourselves up to further trouble or I just, I just, I wanna be extremely clear because I, it needs to be clear for the, for the board and for the public.
Thank you, Member Gallo. The question is to Ms. Semble?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. So, so if I understand your question, you do wanna go back through the emergency. So, so if, if you're asking about liability, we do have the 76838. That is specifically already contained in the preamble of your policy that we specifically relied on those, both the Commissioner of Education's memorandum to all district school superintendents where he was implementing a mandatory face covering. He revised our policy to make it voluntary. And also the State Sheriff and General Scott Rivkees. We already have that in there. So with respect to liability and Senate Bill 72, under 76838, we still have that in our policy and that's still there. I recommend it as a, as a safety measure to make sure if we're gonna do our rule challenging in the litigation, I think that would be the right thing to do is to amend our policy to specifically state that the school board will provide direction to the superintendent and whatever else fancy language that I create and provide to you all ahead of time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what, what I'm concerned about is the action that the board just took tonight, is it in violation of our current policy and can we be challenged by somebody on that current policy?
No, because you can, no.
Okay. I just, that wasn't, that wasn't clear to me, so I just wanna make sure that that was stated publicly. So thank you.
Member Gallo, can I get clarity? Then you do think we should go through the emergency rulemaking process?
As, no, Madam Chair, as long as we're not in current violation of the policy, I think that we, we don't need an emergency meeting unless others disagree with me. I'm open to that discussion. I was just concerned that it needed, that time was of the essence. But if General Counsel does not feel that time is of the essence and we're copacetic with the decision made tonight, then I'm good going through the normal process.
Okay. Again, I want clarity because we don't get to talk offline. My preference would have been emergency.
I'm fine with that, too.
But in the absence of an emergency meeting, just kind of pulling the board, a 30-day meeting where we come back in 30 days and revise the policy? And that also gives us the ability to direct the superintendent to make it less restrictive, not just more restrictive? You would be in support of that? It looks like Member Lopez would, Member Cobert.
It needs to be clear, yes. I think that the policy needs to be less ambiguous.
Anybody, anybody in opposition to coming back in 30 days and this is gonna be a majority rule kind of thing, but consensus is nice. By the way, I found out there's two different definitions for consensus. It's either unanimous or most. That's not very helpful, but.
Can I just clarify? I'm confused, though. You're saying come back in 30 days to change our policy?
To, so the policy we have in place.
To clarify the policy.
To clarify the policy. And right now, the policy, I'm not sure if it gives, gives us the ability to tell the superintendent to make it less restrictive. So clearly, we would want to be able to go both ways. What the superintendent is proposing right now is that this mandate would be in for six, maximum of 60 days. And that would give us in the middle of that time for us to come back and reaffirm exactly what we want it to say moving forward. Okay, okay. I don't, there's, nobody wants to go through this process, but I think there's general consensus that it's the right decision to make.
I, I will support that. I think personally that it's a waste of time, but.
I understand.
I will support it because I think there was unnecessary confusion this evening about our roles and our responsibilities and that the policy is fine as it is. But I, whatever makes the board feel better, I will support in this, in this state.
Thank you, thank you.
But, Madam Chair, just for clarity, this doesn't, this wouldn't stop us from removing, removing a mandatory mask before 60 days if the, okay, perfect, thank you. I'm done talking.
No, it would not. No, it would, it would just, it would be, I don't know if you call it a glitch, Bill, that's not even the right term, a clarification, an opportunity to clarify it and not needing to be done in an expedited rushed fashion. Dr. Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just because it's been a long meeting and sometimes my concentration wavers. What are we agreeing to with this meeting? The 30-day meeting or the Friday night meeting?
Thank you. No, we are agreeing to a 30-day meeting.
Okay, that's fine. All right, another question I have.
I, I need to clarify because it typically takes a 30-day period, but I have to get the ad into the Sentinel, so we have to kind of work around that. And 30 days might be from today, might be on a Saturday, so it's not, it's gonna be 30-ish.
Okay.
And just so you know, for timeline purposes, that gives me about a week to get a draft ready because we have to publish it for that. As soon as we run the ad, we publish it on the website and we can't make any substantive changes after it's been advertised. So that gives me enough time to work with you individually to come up with what I think is going to be relatively minor clarifying language. We're not, not doing a substantive revision. So I just wanted to point that out, it's 30-ish.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question, yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Question for Dr. Jenkins. Would this district-wide mask mandate serve to also extend the employees' masks?
Yes.
And could we also look at the length of the mask mandate to not just look at whether our COVID cases are down, but whether our kids who are under 12 have had a chance to get vaccinated before removing that?
All, all of that can certainly be considered. The board can continue to have conversations. This is just our first step. I don't, I don't wanna try to give that much detail at this point because we've got 60 days to see what happens. If the numbers fall off precipitously, I would be delighted to have a different direction in 30 days. 60 days is our first window so that we have time to see those numbers change. And my understanding, there may be vaccines available for 12 and under as early as December. That could also change. So let's just monitor all of the, all of that detail. Member Castor Dental.
Okay, and one more, one more thing that I wanted to bring up tonight that is related. Now that the FDA has given its full approval for the Pfizer vaccine, I already heard groans down, down the dais, oh, no. I, I would just like to bring that topic up as far as starting negotiations with our, with our unions and discussing if that is something that we want to look at for vaccinations.
So at the table, that's why Mr. Pomerini came to the counter because you can't negotiate that.
Not negotiating, just, is it something that?
Shouldn't, Mr. Pomerini?
So that clearly is something that should be at the negotiating table. I always hesitate to have offers come up here first before we pass them across to the table. That could be seen as an unfair labor practice if that's something that we need to do at the table first. And that's certainly an issue that has to be collectively bargained because that would be a change to some terms and conditions of employment. And, you know, that we would have to negotiate things around like, okay, are we requiring it? When would we be required? And we would have to have discussions about what would be the penalty if somebody refused to get it. So those are all things that we would have to have discussions with our bargaining units.
Yes, I just wanted to bring it up and, and for there to be some kind of initial, you know, discussion or say, yes, this is what, you know, someone mentioned and maybe we should talk about it, whether we do it or not. Maybe it doesn't work, but let's, I just want to put that up there, out there.
And, and Member, and Member Castor Dental, if I may also add, we are pleased at the growing numbers of those who have put in for the incentive. We believe those numbers will continue to grow. Remember, you can't get it until you have your second shot unless you are the J and J version. And so we think those numbers are actually not as accurate as they will be in the coming weeks, so very mindful of that. We also have an incentive that says if you have your vaccine, something happened, you're one of those odd breakthrough cases, but thankfully not deathly ill because you have that vaccine, then we are certainly covering the sick leave for those individuals as well. So we, we've got two positive motivations in place for our employees and certainly we'll make sure our chief negotiator is aware of the possibility. Thank you. Member Bird.
Thank you. I just wanted to, we talked real quick about consequences with the masks and I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to the fact that we do have it in our dress code. Number 10 on our dress code says, "Students shall wear a face mask if required by the board, O C P S principal, or other official." This, yeah, so it is in our dress code and right in there, you know, we have very clear consequences for not following the dress code. So I just wanted to make note of that. I wanted real quick just to ask for kind of a update on our bus driver situation. You know, it's been, we've been in a very, very precarious situation with our shortage of bus drivers and it's a very serious issue for our students and our community and not having enough drivers to get kids to school. So I'm just wanting to know kind of where we're at with that and how we, what we're doing to correct the situation.
Are, are we done with the whole issue of face masks? I just wanna make sure.
Let me just check, we have Member Gallo? Are we still on face mask? Please.
Are we, so in, I think in the current documentation, it allows for face shields and whatnot. Will that documentation be changed?
Good question. Thank you for that question. I've been going back and forth on this same issue. Right now, it's allowed.
It's, face shields are allowed? So will, will we be changing just, just for the, the time that it's mandatory and then obviously going back?
So the CDC recommendation is, I don't think, has changed that face shields are not sufficient yet. Dr. Jenkins?
So we will make that clear that we're talking about the, the face mask coverings that are appropriate. The reason face shields was in your latest policy is because it was optional. You didn't have to wear anything. So if you wanted to have a face shield, that was better than nothing. While we're under a universal face mask policy, we would not include face shields.
Thank you. And that's also been a question with regard to our, our employees. So that, clarifying that would be. So that, clarifying, that would be really helpful. Vice Chair Gould.
So mine's still related. We've focused on masks because that's the, the conversation de jour with COVID. But we have not focused on the other tools in the toolbox to help mitigate. And I would encourage us to use things that are highly effective like making sure that we keep people out who have been exposed for more than fifteen minutes, that they stay out of the classrooms, out of the school buildings, et cetera, until there is a negative test cuz that is a little mushy. I would also suggest that we seriously look at having onsite testing for students and teachers, um, available so that we can know what those results are more immediately. And there are companies that are pros at doing mass testing like that and turning, um, the, the tests around very quickly. Um, and that everything that we can do to social distance, which is almost nearly impossible in my schools, um, that we implement, which we talked about last week. And we've spent a lot of time on masks and they have some efficacy, but those other things, when you look at countries and areas that were talked about in our open, um, time, they have better social distancing and they have better protocols for, uh, monitoring in many of those countries that are, are not mandating school-based masks. So, eh, eh, we need to use all the tools in our toolbox.
Thank you, Member Gould. Uh, Member Bird, I'm gonna come to you, but while we're still on this subject, Dr. Jenkins, the other thing, I don't wanna belabor, um, our time here, but if you are able to provide information to board members about, um, lunchroom, uh, arrangements in each of their schools, just so they have an understanding of what's being done, I think that would be helpful to do. And so, Member Bird, let me go to you.
Buses.
It was about buses.
No, you said.
Shoot. Well, you, no, you had asked about buses and Dr. Jenkins was gonna respond.
You talked about in the code conduct, right?
Okay. Come back. Okay. Okay, um, let me ask if there are any committee reports. And I know, uh, I know that Member Felder, Member Felder has.
Did we get the bus?
Did we get a bus answer? And we'll come back to you in just a second. I, I think.
I thought Mr. Pacheco was coming down.
There you go.
For members, yeah, Miss Bird, you had a question about, uh, buses. I apologize. As you know, we had, uh, some, um, missing bus drivers at the beginning of the year. As we go around, as we go, we do, um, do the routing for all the kids that do qualify for bus. So during the first two weeks, we do some adjustments to make sure that we can move those kids that we might have spaces on some other buses because the kids are not riding. Uh, regretfully, the first week, of course, some things that happened were that, I don't know if you remember, but we had afternoon storms almost every day, even on Friday, that so that pretty much, uh, went to, uh, create an additional kinda delay for us during the first two weeks. I'm, I'm glad to report that we're seeing some progress. I mean, we do still need drivers, we need about a hundred drivers, you know, in order to be able to not only fill the positions that we have empty. We do have some bus drivers that at times have to take, uh, long-term leave and we also got affected by, by COVID and we also have the daily absenteeism. So those, between those three, at any given time, we might be covering about a hundred routes. Uh, as the time progresses, our bus drivers, our families, our kids become more used to the bus routes that they're, that they're, um, have to go on every day. So things, they do get better. Uh, I cannot promise you that we will not have delays because like I said, we do have, uh, a, a little bit of, uh, shortage of bus drivers. We're not only working on getting new bus drivers hired, but we're also working on making sure that we keep the drivers that we have onboard because that's, that's two key pieces. Uh, we saw some of our bus drivers retire a little bit earlier than we would expect it as well. So that was a surprise for us, we came back for the, for the new school year. But we're working on, on, on solutions on everyday basis. We're looking at consolidating, consolidating routes, uh, doing different strategies in order to make sure that we are as efficient as we can be dealing with the shortages that we have on drivers.
Member Bird.
Um, thank you so much, Mr. Pacheco. Um, so what, first of all, are we still encouraging, telling parents that we encourage them to drive? Have we sent that message out recently, since the beginning of the year? Okay, um, yeah, cuz I think we still need to be doing that also. Um, but my question, I just have one more question for you. So what are, what exactly are we doing to possibly increase our chances of hiring drivers? To, I like, I know we had a job fair, right? How, how did that go? Do we have a report on that or how that went?
I believe we had about sixteen people that show up. Uh, uh, one thing that has transpired a- around the, the, uh, industry is that the CDL license, as you know, it takes about six weeks to eight weeks to get somebody trained. It's a little bit more difficult now for people to obtain their CDL license. So that doesn't help either with the market. There's a higher demand for bus drivers, not only for the bus industry, but for delivery. Once you have a CDL, you can go work in other industries. As you know, uh, there's more deliveries that are being made, uh, at home by some of the, of, of those companies that do home deliveries for the goods that we buy. So there's a, a big demand for, for those drivers. So we are doing, uh, job fairs. Right now, uh, we're planning to even encourage and advertise the possibility of some benefits. We do have a signing bonus for our new drivers. But we also wanna advertise all the, uh, the other, um, the other, uh, incentives that might be approved by the board and ratified by the union. So that could be something that they could benefit as well. And we, we're looking for different strategies on a everyday, everyday basis. Literally, we're talking to a team to see can, uh, how can we attract those, those drivers? But as, as you know, just like we're looking for them, every other company in the county is also looking for them. So we're competing for the very limited pool of resources.
Right, yes, absolutely, and I, and I totally understand that. I, I agree with advertising as much as we can. The, um, the incentives, like you said, the signing bonus and whatever other incentives we have, especially, um, bonuses that have already been agreed upon within the union. Um, I think the more we can do that, the better. Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm still just, I'm just really, really concerned about the ones, the routes that have bus drivers having to go back a second or third time to pick up kids. I just, I'm, I'm really worried about the drivers, I'm worried about their stress level and I'm really worried about kids standing out there unsupervised at bus stops, waiting for a bus. So, um, you know, I, I definitely hope that we can use every tool in the toolbox to remedy that.
You know, the, the one thing that we were able to do this year, um, you know, the, the, as you have any type of resource, like we have the buses and our drivers, we have been able to maximize or lower the number of routes. So if you think about it for a school district our size, transporting close to seventy thousand kids, we have, we only have six hundred and eighty-six routes. So we're doing it as efficient as we can, but when, regretfully, when you're being that efficient, there's no, there's no, um, gaps that we have. So whenever one bus is late, kind of, it trickles down. And we had to be that efficient because we didn't have enough drivers just to begin with. But we, we, we have a very dedicated team that tried to make arrangements as they go. I believe that after the first couple of weeks of school, things do get better just because of the adjustments that we can make. But like you said, if, if the parents can help us, uh, transporting those kids, that'll be great. But I understand that not all of them can and that's one thing that we recognize and that's why we make every effort to get them there on time, uh, on everyday basis. But at times, we do, we do have, um, to use some resources, like you said, about, about, uh, going back and picking up another group, bringing it back to school. If, if everything works out perfectly, there's no traffic, we can do it on time, but some other times, we're running a little bit late. Again, the weather sometimes in Florida doesn't help us too much whenever we have weather delays. You know, if it happens, let's say at the high school level, now it is, it affects elementary schools and middle schools in the afternoon.
Anything else, Member Bird? Okay, um, Member Felder has an announcement, I believe, or a, or a short report.
Yes, very quickly, uh, the VAP meeting I attended, uh, on August twentieth, there are three things I wanna, uh, give you. Uh, number one, they say there will be no billing for school boards for lease. So we need, at least they're not gonna bill us anymore, I thought it was wonderful. And, uh, they're gonna go to, I was excited about that, they say no, no more billing us, okay. Virtual meetings and, um, they said the VAP meetings must be done in-house and the next meeting isn't until April twenty twenty-two.
That's good news.
Yeah, V A P. Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, good work. Vice Chair, Vice Chair.
Uh, we did have a communications committee, uh, meeting today. Those, um, notes will be available, but we came up with, um, maybe some proactive recommendations for, um, future, uh, communications and just, um, refining our communications a little bit. So please watch for those committee notes in the future.
Thank you, excellent. Dr. Jenkins, you, you pressed your button, you wanna close this out?
I did press my button and it's just one, and, and I am happy to close this out. Uh, one, um, clarification I was going to provide in case someone is actually still listening. When we talk about our universal mask policy, there is a medical, I wanna reemphasize, there is a medical exemption that will be recognized and we're not going to make that complex at all. It is a, it would be a letter from your doctor or his physician assistant, uh, as long as it's on letterhead or on their prescription note, that letter is sufficient. For those who had exemptions last year, I'm going to make an assumption that you're still using that same exemption this year, you won't need to redo that process. Um, but, uh, we are looking to make it as simple as possible. Letter from your physician on letterhead or on his prescription, uh, tablet from the doctor or the physician's assistant is all that we will be looking for. What I said. So I don't wanna stretch it further. If you say nurses and other folks, then it's gonna say LPN, RN and nurse practitioner. So, so let's say, uh, physician's assist, assistant or nurse practitioner. Those three.
Okay.
All right, just wanted to make sure, it'll all be in writing, um, we'll, we'll put some out certainly, but I wanted to make that clarification. If you've already had a medical exemption, then you should be covered.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. If there's no further business, the meeting's now adjourned.